Calling to order the Monday, December 2nd, 2019, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Mayor Protam Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henin?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Turbrack?
Here. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support by Councilmember Henin. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Tonight's agenda has been approved. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Reverend Tal Sullivan.
Let's pray. God, it is a pleasure to come before you in this city council meeting tonight and to invite your blessing to rest on our leaders, on our city. And, God, we give you thanks that we live in a nation that has declared and continues to declare that we are under you. And so, God, we thank you that you desire to bless and you desire for all of us to experience your love. And so I pray that decisions that are made tonight in this meeting will be honoring to you and will look to you for wisdom. God, give our mayor and our city council members and all those who serve our city, give them wisdom. I pray that as we go into this month of December, which for many is a time of great celebration and remembering your love for us, God, it's also a time where there's a lot of grieving and a lot of hurt. And I pray that you would help us as a city that really does love people around us to have our eyes open and to be alert to the needs of those around us. We pray this for your honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to citizens' comments. When you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Hello, good evening. Georgia Dixon, 2615 Kenmore. Obviously, this is not on tonight's agenda, but I wanted to bring it to the attention that I am concerned about the family video perhaps becoming an MRI imaging facility. I'm right at the corner of Catalpa and Kenmore, and I cannot park in front of my house much because the doctor's office at Catalpa and Coolidge has their staff park down Kenmore Street just about every day from the morning till the afternoon. Day parking, not for an hour, not for an appointment, not to run in and, you know, get a hot dog, pick up a prescription, whatever. It's day parking. So I'm concerned that if the family video space at Catalpa and Coolidge would be more spillover into Kenmore Street for parking, so it would be the end of Kenmore Street neighborhood as we know it because I've complained to Matt Gardner, the police, the doctor's office, have written letters. I cannot park my car there during the day. And because we have to move our cars off the street at night, the staff at the doctor's office swoops in at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning while people are getting ready for their day's activities, getting ready for work, children, breakfast, whatever they're doing. So I don't think shuffling a car around is high on the agenda for many people. So I'm very concerned about the possible use of a medical facility at the family video. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eugene Dixon, I'm Georgia's husband. If I could just add, when I went into the doctor's office that's on the corner of Catalpa and Coolidge and complained because we had electricians coming to the house that needed a place to park their vehicles, they said, no, this is a public street. We can park anywhere we want. So they proceeded then to actually call the Berkeley Police. The Berkeley Police came out and mentioned to me they thought that the doctor's office had some arrangement with the video, family video across the street to use for overflow parking. However, just in driving by the doctor's office on most days, there seemingly are plenty of open parking places in their lot. So I don't know if they think they have, you know, that many patients that are coming in and using it, but why they instruct the staff to park in the neighborhood is beyond me.
Thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else struggling to get up to the microphone, we will move on to our order of business this evening. First up is tonight's consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 38th City Council meeting on Monday, November 18th, 2019, and special meeting on Monday, November 25th, 2019. Number two, ordinance number O-1619, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to add new Article 14 prohibition of conversion therapy to Chapter 30 Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances and to prescribe a penalty for violations. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at Berkeley City Hall Library and Community Center. Three, Resolution R. 3819, matter of adopting a resolution recognizing Anthony Turner for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Four, Resolution R. 3919, resolution recognizing a donation from the Berkeley Lions Club.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Let's remember Gavin, Mayor Protam, with support. Are there any corrections or additions? Anybody wish to comment?
My name is Tal Sullivan. I live at 3774 Cummings. And, Mr. Mayor and Council, I wish that I had come across the information regarding the, it's the ordinance regarding the conversion therapy. I did not come across this information until about an hour and a half ago, and so it's not my style to just pop in, but without having time to think through and put my thoughts to words appropriately. Obviously, this matter is, and let me back up for a second. I understand, or from my understanding, this does not apply to me as a pastor within the context of my congregation. However, I have great concerns and feel that as a city moving forward with this, we're doing a disservice to the LGBTQ community. We're doing a disservice to everyone in our city by adopting this ordinance. I feel very strongly about this. I know that my standing here and saying anything about this puts a target on my back because I've dealt with this stuff before. I've dealt with counseling of individuals who struggle with LGBTQ or any long list of sexual areas of thought. I think we can all agree that the area of sexuality is very complex. It's something that I believe that God made, and it's under his jurisdiction that we do best when we follow the way that he has spelled out for us to live. For a lot of people, that comes across as judgmental and hateful to say that there is such thing as right or wrong in the area of sexuality. But every person I've dealt with and talked to within the context of my congregation will, there's many struggles in this arena of life. And my experience is with those who have been gay. I had a friend who, I sat by his deathbed and I did his funeral for him. He, on his deathbed, said, I wish that people were willing to tell me the hard things. They were willing to talk me through this stuff. And this is an arena where a lot of people are nervous to take a stand and say, no, this is not a healthy direction for us to go. As I started reading through the ordinance, I got stuck, and I don't want to, this isn't the format or the venue for having a long discussion, so I'm keeping my comments extremely short. I think I would start off by just asking the council to hit the brakes on this thing and to give it some more thought. I look at the language that's spelled out in here, and right off the bat, just the fact that we're saying LGBTQ, we're going to give special protection to that group. We all know that that acronym has grown and continues to grow with more and more people that say, well, I'm this and I'm this variance from what, as a Christian, the scripture actually says, God made us this way. This whole arena of sexuality, it's defined right there in Point A under the preamble, being lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning is not a disease, disorder, illness, deficiency, or shortcoming. And right off the bat, we are, we're as a city, and obviously it happens in our nation as well, our state, but we as a city are, we're going to try to define something and say whether it's right or wrong. And I think we're wise to look to how God actually defines things, and he spells things out as right or wrong. And this arena of sexuality fits in along with a long list of other areas of our lives where God says, you know what? You do it this way and you're going to be blessed. You do it this way and you're going to experience a lot of hardship. I read all the stuff about this research study under Point E, research studies and other available evidence. I would really be interested in seeing research studies that are fairly presented from both sides because there are definitely two sides to this, and I could provide plenty of information that supports the side that says, no, conversion therapy is not something that's detrimental. I could provide a long line of witnesses that would stand up here and say that they have experienced healing in their lives. They're experiencing more health, more satisfaction in their life now than they ever did before. And obviously, when there's an area that we struggle with and we're going back and forth in our thinking about whether this is right or wrong, it does cause people to be depressed. It does cause frustrations. And so I don't think that this is a wise direction for us to go. And just quickly, following what seems to be sweeping across our nation right now and actually around the world, it requires some more thought. And I would plead with you to do some more digging in. And if there's a way I can serve, like I said, it was an hour and a half ago I learned about this, and I would have been, my preference would have been to approach you guys before this public setting and to just engage and say, here's my perspective. It's a disservice to every person in this community, especially those in the LGBTQ community, to move forward with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
Hi, Ryan Gesun. I live on Kepling in Berkeley. I wasn't going to speak about this because it was on the consent agenda, but the ordinance that's being passed on a second reading, as it states in the ordinance, being LGBTQ is not a disease. It's not a mental affliction. It's just who people are. And to try to convert somebody, to change somebody from who they are, just seems wrong to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Dave Hurst, 2989 Phillips here in Berkeley. I guess I just would like to express absolute support for this ban. I think protecting marginalized people and supporting those who, you know, frankly have, deal with a lot of stuff in their life that I frankly don't have to deal with, I think is kind of the point to the city and the council. And I would just really ask that you kind of support the ban in order to, you know, support those who need the support, frankly. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from council? Questions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
We do have a couple resolutions tonight. First off, I have asked Councilmember Henin to read R. 3819. And before that, you want to call Anthony up?
Yeah, Anthony Turner, do you want to come on up?
Yeah, right there is good. Perfect.
So, a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Anthony Turner for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Anthony Turner is a student at Berkeley High School where he has excelled academically as a honor roll student, a member of National Honor Society, and a member of the French National Honor Society. And whereas Anthony Turner is also active in extracurricular activities, where he has been a member of the marching band, lettered in varsity cross-country, elected president of the Cards Club, and served as a student member of the Berkeley Tree Board. And whereas Anthony Turner will be graduating from Berkeley High School in June of 2020 and will attend university to gain his four-year Fisheries Biologist degree. And whereas Anthony Turner has been active in scouting since he was six years old, having held the ranks of Tiger, Wolf, Bear, Weebolo, Scout, Tenderfoot, Second Class, First Class, Star, and Life, and has served as his troop's Assistant Patrol Leader and Librarian. And whereas Anthony Turner, to attain the rank of Eagle Scout, worked with the Royal Oak Nature Society at Cummingston Park to build three-seater benches at the entrance of the park that serve as a gathering point for those preparing nature walks guided by members of the nature society. And whereas, on June 20th, 2019, Anthony Turner passed his Eagle Board of Review. Over the course of his scouting career, Anthony Turner has camped for 41 nights, hiked 70 miles, biked 150 miles, and earned 27 merit badges, including the Medal of Merit for Lifesaving. And now therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the City Council does hereby recognize and congratulate Anthony Turner for his achievement in attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, and we express our pride in his accomplishments as a role model for others. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, December 2nd, 2019. Daniel J. Turbrack, Mayor.
Come on up here. Anthony, I will not make you do this, but if there's anything you want to say, feel free to come on up to the microphone. And before you start, as Councilmember Henin read, this is, you know, an extremely prestigious rank that you've been able to achieve, and, you know, I'm sure folks are incredibly proud of you, just as we all are, and the type of person that you are, you know, reading off all of your different achievements and the Medal for Merit of Lifesaving. I mean, that's, those are some very important things, and you should be extremely proud of yourself, and we certainly congratulate you.
Thank you. Oh, I'd just like to thank the City of Berkeley for all the help they've given me. I know with my Communication Merit Badge that I had to get for Eagle, I had to come to a few of these meetings, city council meetings, and I know I also had to come to them for my Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. And I also came here for, to talk about road dieting, also for my Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. So just thank you again because really without you guys, I wouldn't be up here.
It's the other way around, Anthony, but thank you. Congratulations again, Anthony. That's awesome. I have asked Councilmember Price to read her first resolution, R. 3919, please.
Do we have any representatives of the Lions Club here with us this evening? Oh, excellent. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, accepting a donation from the Berkeley Lions Club. Whereas, the City of Berkeley Parks and Recreation Department and Friends of the Berkeley Library are accepting a donation from Berkeley Lions Club. And whereas, the Berkeley Lions Club has embodied the mission of the Lions Clubs to empower volunteers to serve their communities, meet humanitarian needs, encourage peace, and promote international understanding. And whereas, the Berkeley Lions Club has volunteered and donated to several community events and organizations for years. The current member organization wanted to donate significant funds to be used for the Berkeley Public Library and Berkeley Parks and Recreation. And whereas, the funds donated to the two departments will be used in a multitude of ways to benefit senior, child, and adult programs and spaces. And now therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Berkeley accepts the generous donations made by the Berkeley Lions Club to the Friends of the Berkeley Library and Berkeley Parks and Recreation. And Section 2, the Parks and Recreation Department and Friends of the Berkeley Library plan to use the donations to enhance their departments. And, Section 3, that the City of Berkeley is grateful for community organizations like the Lions Club who donate their time and funding in order to improve the lives of all residents and those who come to Berkeley for programs and events. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, December 2nd, 2019. Daniel J. Turbrack, Mayor.
Please come on up.
I also wanted to thank the city for being cooperative and being just a place that we took pleasure in volunteering to serve and, you know, donating the money. But the one thing I'm going to really implore people is please remember to volunteer, even though the Lions Club no longer exists, there are several, there are still other organizations, service organizations. We hear a lot in this city about how much people love the city, and we also hear people complain a lot. But if you have time, volunteer, find a way to help our wonderful city. I really implore you, but thank you.
Well, thank you, Gary, for your volunteerism. You're certainly a longtime volunteer in a number of different places.
And I also intend to remain a volunteer.
Yeah, we're not letting you get too far, don't worry. Matt?
Just on behalf of the Berkeley Parks and Recreation and the Friends of the Berkeley Library, we are very grateful to the Lions and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Presentations, matter of receiving a report from Plant and Moran regarding the audit results for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019.
Well, this is getting set up. Mr. Robb Gardner, any setup?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As you know, annually, we go through an audit process. It's part of a requirement of all municipalities to do so. We have worked for, I believe, 13 years with Plant and Moran in order to perform this very vital function. Each year, following a couple weeks' worth of very in-depth study of the city's finances, they render a comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, and that information is then found on the city's website for any and all to view. And so part of that process is to have them present to this body as well.
Lisa, this is nothing to do with...
No offense whatsoever.
...the most important thing we do from a budget perspective.
I completely understand.
You're heading for the hills when you come up here.
I find this stuff so fascinating.
I promise it is a brief. We aren't going to read all 118 pages of the CAFR, just for those that are still here. So, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Again, very honored to be here tonight to present the results of the audit. As the city manager explained, it is every year a pretty involved process for a couple of weeks. Obviously, this year, we have new Finance Director at the helm with his continued, consistent, excellent staff, so we do appreciate their professionalism and cooperation in the course of the audit because, as you can imagine, it's not a fun process for them, but I think we've developed a good working relationship and rapport over the years. So, again, very pleased to be here tonight. As in previous years, we do have a brief slide presentation that Keith Shemansky is with me here tonight, who's the manager in charge of the overall day-to-day operations of the audit, so he'll walk through just a few financial highlights. And then we also have our separate letter of comments and recommendations that I'll walk through as well. Certainly happy to answer any questions along the way. From an overall perspective, we did once again render what is referred to as a clean opinion on the comprehensive annual financial report, which means it's unmodified opinion, meaning everything contained within that document is in accordance with all of the many, many rules promulgated by GASB for what needs to be contained in that very comprehensive document. So, again, a clean report, which we're happy to always be able to render. Again, just from an overall perspective, I guess I would say, as Keith goes through the financial results, we continue to see what we would refer to maybe as guarded optimism when we look at the financial results for the city. Certainly have seen a very concerted effort over the past few years to build up fund balance. We see the large revenue sources. We see positive trends. We see the large revenue sources, we see positive trends, and seeing those being much more reliable in terms of state shared revenue and property tax revenue, but it is going to be modest increases. We don't expect there to suddenly be a windfall that solves all of the long-term problems that the city will continue to look at in the form of those retiree healthcare and pension obligations that we talk about every year, and really working, like many cities in this area are, to try and address those and get them to a higher level of funding. So, again, the city's been able to start looking at some capital needs and addressing those, and certainly is able to cover the day-to-day operations, but still looking at the challenges of just getting on top of and improving that funded percentage of those retiree obligations. So with that, I will turn it over to Keith to walk us through the slides, but certainly ask any questions along the way.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening.
Hi, Keith.
Come on. Hello. I think Lisa did a nice job summarizing what we're going to see in the slides, so I'm going to dive right into the details, starting with a three-year history of general fund revenues. Here we do see a modest increase in total revenue, about $400,000 increase, bringing the total to about $11.6 million. Property taxes are the city's largest revenue source, making up just less than 2/3 of total general fund revenue. That revenue source increased 5% from a year ago, mostly driven by increases in taxable value throughout the city. And the second-largest revenue source, state shared revenue, had a modest increase as well, of about 4%, bringing the total to just over $1.5 million. So, slight increases in general fund revenue, and as we'll see on the next slide, there were increases here as well, a little bit more than the 4% increase we saw in revenue, but that was planned spending by the city. So total revenue did increase about $1.1 million compared to 2018. That was an 11% increase. The largest category of increases was about $450,000 in general government. That includes additional contributions to this municipal employee's pension plan, as well as additional expenses incurred for building inspection, and the fact that that was contracted out for last year. There were some increases in public safety as well, for salaries, wages, fringe benefits, including pension, and then about a $250,000 increase in the bottom category, for debt service, capital outlay, and transfers. So once again, the general fund transferred $350,000 to the Recreation Revolving Fund, and there were increased capital outlay expenses in 2019 compared to 2018 and other prior years. So that includes a couple of large DPW vehicles, as well as some infrastructure improvements. So like I said, expenditures went up more than they typically have in prior years, but that was planned items mostly for pension funding, capital outlay items. On the third slide, we have a six-year history of fund balance, or the equity in the general fund, broken out by category. As you can see, total fund balance has increased each of the last five years, and in fact has more than doubled from the end of 2014 to the end of 2019. So that really is a credit to City Council and management for keeping a close eye on the budget, bringing operations in line with the revenue sources, and the fact that those are increasing on only a modest basis from year to year, and still handling significant needs such as pension and retiree healthcare funding, capital outlay items. So in 2019, revenues did once again exceed expenditures, and although the surplus wasn't as great as in prior years, it was still a surplus and added $471,000 to total fund So, as Lisa said, it is a good amount to be in, it's a stable position for the city, but there are long-term challenges still ahead, including pension, retiree, healthcare, which we'll talk about at the end of these graphs. There's also the need to maintain reserves for cash flow purposes, potential emergency spending that may arise, as well as just being well-positioned for what could be another economic downturn in which taxable values decrease at some point in the future. Looking at the details of the fund balance classifications, there are a couple of major changes from the last year. The top blue bar for non-spendable fund balance is mostly made up of prepaid expenses, and that includes several hundred thousand dollars for a fire truck that was paid for during the fiscal year but not received until after the end of the year. So for that reason, it wasn't expensed in the general fund until it was received. It's sitting in fund balance at the end of June 30, 2019, but is essentially spoken for and already paid for. The other major change is in the assigned category, which represents the planned spending for the next fiscal year. That was much greater in 2018, and in 2019, only about $350,000 was originally budgeted to be spent in 2019, or at the end of 2019, carrying over into 2020. But I understand that number will increase as some of those capital outlay items that weren't spent during 2019 will carry over to the next year. So overall, the city ended with $4.6 million in unassigned fund balance. That has no restrictions on it, it's available for operations and future needs, and as we mentioned, is a good position to be in, but certainly not excessive, or, you know, a lot of riches where the city's in a position to, you know, increase spending significantly. It is good reserved, but it's an appropriate one to have on hand for future needs. Recently switched gears to the Water and Sewer Fund, where we show revenues and expenses side by side, as well as the total net position or equity in that fund. The operating results did generate about $750,000 of positive operating income, bringing the total net position to $16.7 million. However, as you can see in the classification in that last bar, the vast majority of that is already invested in capital outlay or capital assets, so it's not available for future operations. The unrestricted net position, which is available and is already net of the long-term pension or retiree healthcare obligations, is $1.1 million. So, again, it's an appropriate and positive position to be in, but certainly not excessive. And then finally, we've alluded to some of the long-term challenges that the city faces, primarily through its legacy costs. So on the last graph, we've broken out the two pension plans, as well as the retiree healthcare, or OPEB, plan. So, the first plan is invested with the statewide MERS system, so its year-end is measured as of December 31st, 2018. There was a downturn in the market at the end of calendar year 2018, which is reflected in this measure of the city's net pension liability. So overall, the funding percentage in that plan did decrease from 58% to 50% during the year. In the Public Safety Pension Plan, the net position essentially remained the same, while the liability increased about $2 million, which is typical as plans mature and participants come closer to receiving their benefits. So, that plan ended the year at 73% funded, and finally, the retiree healthcare plan was 28% funded at the end of 2019. That was an increase of about 2%. The total liability increased only $236,000, and the net position increased a little bit more than that, $400,000. So, the city did gain in its funding percentage there. In the retiree healthcare plan, the city contributed $1.1 million into the trust, but the majority of that, plus $900,000, was actually spent on premiums during the year. So, only a few hundred thousand dollars was left over as residual and available to continue to grow for future benefits. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to cover our end-of-audit letter, and then we'd be happy to entertain any questions that you have.
We have our separate letter, so not the 100-page document, but about a 12-page document that does come in three parts. I'll walk through them. The first section relates to any internal control matters that we're required to report in writing at the conclusion of the audit, so I think we've talked about this one in the past. There's some language in here that describes what our definition is. We're looking for design of internal controls or processes, or actual function of internal controls and processes that we feel like either did result in a misstatement or could result in a misstatement based on our assessment in the course of the audit. So there's two items that we've reported in here. The first item really is getting to adjustments that we identified. As we talked about, it's a fairly exhaustive process, testing the balances and looking at what went into calculating balances at the end of the year. So in the course of this audit, there were adjustments that we proposed, that we identified through our testing. We proposed those, those have all been posted by management and are now reflected in the CAFR document that you have. Those have all been corrected. The second item we have on here is an unusual one that hasn't popped up in the past. We did notice a situation where certain surcharge rates that were approved were unfortunately not updated within the system prior to billings going out. However, the city, from our understanding, has worked out a plan to adjust that and correct it to the residents going forward, which will be corrected on a future invoice so that everyone is made whole in what should have been charged. The second section of our letter is really just the overall viewpoint of how the audit went, kind of qualitatively, kind of staying away from the numbers, just what were any unusual things that came up or issues that we had. The first part is just a reminder that our responsibility in doing an audit is the expression of the opinion, and all the numbers that go into it really are the responsibility of management in their processes throughout the year to gather the data that then goes into the audit. In terms of the audit process, our plan, scope, and timing, we did perform according to what we planned and what we expressed at the beginning. There were no significant surprises or anything that came up that indicated any unusual risks or unusual transactions we weren't aware of going into the audit. At the bottom of Page 3, significant audit findings, here's where we would talk about any new accounting pronouncements that were in effect. This year, it was really a very minor one that just added some disclosures about the city's long-term debt. So no changes to accounting, just those footnotes continue to get longer and longer every year, it feels like. We also have a discussion about significant estimates, since those represent numbers in the financial statement that, just by their nature, have a little more estimation that goes into them, or assumptions that go into them, and the most significant one is looking at those retiree healthcare and pension liabilities, since the actuaries obviously have a lot that they're trying to predict with the input of the city about mortality rates and investment returns, and so there is a lot of estimation that goes into those numbers. Besides that, we had no other significant difficulties or disagreements in performing the audit. We do mention, again, some of those corrected adjustments that we noticed in the course of the audit that have been reflected in the financial statements, and beyond that, really no other significant matters to report. So with that, I'll conclude my comments. Again, we provided in Section 3 some information about what's new at the state level in terms of a lot going on with transparency with these retiree healthcare and pension benefits, and reporting to the state, new chart of accounts that's being required by the state, and some other accounting pronouncements that are coming within the next few years that we're working with Finance Director to get implemented. So we'll open it up for questions at this point.
Thank you. Questions from Council for Lisa and/or Keith, either way, or Keith, just on his own?
Whichever, either, both?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify one thing that you said.
Yes.
Speaking to where we overcharged our water users, we overcharged commercial water users.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Not residential, and so we are working on refunding them. I don't want our residents to...
My mistake, yes. You are correct. Yep, apologies.
And if you could address this, or if our Finance Director could address this, we had in the longer document, you know, a couple categories where we were significantly over budget, and Mr. Pollak had explained that to me. When I first saw that, it was quite alarming, being $460,000 over budget on insurance and $33,000 over on building inspections, but before, you know, other folks see that, I want, you know, an explanation of the rationale and why it isn't as alarming as it appears at first.
Yeah, and I know Dennis got ahold of me, and I did confirm this morning. The categories that the auditors have to present under insurance was really the OPEB funding and the MERS funding. So we had $280,000 and $200,000, so about $480,000, which is why we were 460 over budget. We didn't amend the budget because we weren't sure how much we were going to contribute. And the correction this year will be, we'll estimate over the amount that we think we'll put in, and then hopefully we'll be able to put that amount in, but we didn't amend the budget, is why it seemed that we went over. And refresh my memory.
And to touch on that, that was the first one, that was the extra contributions we put in.
Yes, yes, which we didn't, I didn't have Council amend the budget, so we were, it appeared we were over budget by $460,000, when in fact, those were the contributions that the Council agreed to make to fund OPEB and retirement for MERS. And then the other was the building, you mentioned earlier, the building expenditures were significantly higher. Revenues were higher as well. We amended expenditures twice, but we had a really good, like, last quarter for building revenues, and we did exceed, revenues exceeded expenditures. We were pretty close to that 75% which we pay McKenna, so we were really close there. But once again, we estimated, and by the end of the year, we were about $50,000, $52,000 short of what we estimated.
Thank you.
So that's what...
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. In your report, you offered to help come up with sort of different solutions to help manage the long-term debt liabilities, which I know has been a priority for Council and Administration, and so I was wondering if maybe you could just highlight some of the 30,000-foot view?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot that we see communities doing. Obviously, there's two sides of this to look at. One is looking at the liabilities themselves, and determining if there are ways to negotiate or changes that can be made within the parameters of the existing contracts to help work at reducing those liabilities through different insurance options and things like that. Again, that's a touchy one, just knowing what's available and is allowable under contracts, but that's certainly trying to get at that liability side of things. The other is the assets, and what are you able to set aside? I mean, I think the city's been very cognizant of that, of looking for ways to put in more than the required contributions, to try to get more assets in there to start earning. There's looking at the performance of investments and how they're invested. Are there ways to better optimize earnings and be able to achieve maximum earnings on what you have set aside? And then I think a lot of communities have gone the route of looking at the bonding and have had some success there. So I think, again, it's really thinking through both of those sides of the equations, and what, you know, sometimes small changes can make a big improvement, but sometimes it takes a big change like the bonding to try and get those assets there to really be having returns.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional, Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick comment. You commented on cybersecurity in here, and I think that's something very important. I just want everybody, excuse me, everybody to know that we are in the process of adopting or writing a cybersecurity annex to our emergency operations plan, so we are looking at that very carefully, and thank you for your suggestions on here. That may be something else that we want to look at.
Absolutely.
In addition to what we're doing with the operations plan.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd love to follow up on that exact thought. We have a Technology Advisory Committee that I'm sure will benefit from this additional insight and guidance, working with our Chief Innovation Officer, which helps drive the technology here. So I look forward to helping move this forward, and maybe we'll be reaching out to get some of your folks' help on that as well.
We would be happy to. So we have a group that focuses on cybersecurity. It's a threat that all of our clients face across industries, but it just seems like municipalities are especially targeted these days. So, we're able to help informally, formally, however you would like.
So we probably shouldn't put our money into Bitcoin, then, is probably what you're saying, yeah. Great, thanks. And again, I do appreciate this service that you guys provide to help ensure that everything's on the up and up, and perhaps the mayor will ask this as well, but as far as clarifying, again, the nature of the finding, you said it's a clean, without comment, that kind of stuff. Can you just repeat that one more time?
Yep, so our opinion on the financial document itself, it's called an unmodified opinion, meaning there's nothing we've indicated that would modify the opinion. It's very, kind of backwards language, but that would indicate, so basically saying that everything contained in the document is in accordance with governmental accounting standards and is materially correct based on our testing.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
I wanted a couple of things that each of you have said. First, Lisa, you said guarded optimism earlier. What are we worried about from the guard? Is that specific to Berkeley, or is it specific to the fact that we haven't had a down market in over 10 years, and it's coming?
It's that, it's general. It's nothing that would be specific to Berkeley. I think the challenges you see are, like I said, consistent, especially within southeast Michigan, of, you know, more mature communities that have these legacy obligations to be handling. I think that you have been on the forefront of addressing them. You're certainly not burying your heads in the sand on that, and it's really just, you know, still thinking back to those years where revenue sharing was tumbling, properties' taxes began tumbling, and wanting to just continue to be cognizant of that and not get ahead of ourselves with spending, since things are fairly stable right now. I have no reason to think that that's going to... I have no reason to think that that's going to take an immediate turn, but we certainly know at some point the economy will hit a blip, and you are well-positioned to address that with what you've done to date.
And Keith, a couple different times, you mentioned the fund balance that we have is not excessive, it is appropriate. Is that a specific benchmark, a percentage, that you like to see, or is that, again, because we know that in the future, there's going to be a blip, and making sure that, maybe a little bigger than a blip, but we need to be able to have adequate fund balances? Is there a number, or is that just based on us that you feel like we're in a good position?
It's more based on a feel, there are several guidelines out there, at least in terms of minimums, and most of them would say it should be at least 10% to 15% of expenses, but every community needs to add some additional considerations onto that. First of all, how large your budget is to begin with, so certainly, you know, one emergency repair will eat a bigger percentage of a $10 million budget than a $100 million budget. And then also look at, we encourage everyone to have a long-term capital improvement plan, so identify what your capital needs are for at least the next five to 10 years, and how you expect to be able to fund those, whether through long-term debt or cash reserves. And then just your general risk appetite, how comfortable you are with the amount of fund balance that you have on hand compared to the potential variability in your budget, as well as considering the long-term needs, both capital and the legacy costs. And, you know, I don't think I mentioned this, but the legacy costs add up to $31 million. And so, no one expects a community to be able to fund that on a short-term basis, but when you put that in perspective next to the $4.5 million in unassigned fund balance, you can see that there are future needs for it.
Yeah, no, certainly. Thank you. And as you mentioned, Keith, the MERS liability we looked at as of December 2018, you mentioned December was bad, but January was great.
Exactly.
So, I imagine we'll see that come January of 2019, that was great, so I expect that to go back to stabilize where it was. Thank you both for, you know, continuing to work with us and making sure that we are doing things transparently, and that everything is present and accounted for, and in the cases there are not, certainly bringing those to light. I know in the past, we have had some other internal control, and we've talked about it, and we talked about it when we get ready.
Addressed them, yes.
We have addressed those, and that is, that's important because it's been a little while, and we've had some turnover and some other things that have impacted that, but not seeing that in your letter was very welcome.
Yes, yeah, that's what we like to see.
On top of the other things that you mentioned, we know that we're in good position financially. We can't control what's going to happen in the future, but we do try to, as our most important job here, I think for all of us, is obviously being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and being able to do that over the last 10 years has been a little easier when everybody's happy and everything's going up, and when things are not, is when the planning that I think that we have in place here is going to really show up and be critically important. So, thank you all for that. Are there any other comments on the presentation? Again, this is just a presentation today. Let's see, none here? Okay, so we can cross audit, isn't that why we have a packed house tonight? You don't have to be left when...
Again, no offense taken.
No, that's okay. Thank you so much, Keith.
Thank you very much for your time. Have a good night.
All right. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 3 on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M9419, matter to authorize Hubble, Roth, and Clark, HRC, for engineering services related to the 2020 sidewalk replacement and assessment program at a cost not to exceed $27,400 from the sidewalk fund, account number 470-938-821-000.
Is there a motion to approve R9419?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support of Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're joined this evening by DBW Director Derek Schuler, as well as Roland Alex of HRC, in order to discuss sort of the beginnings of an updated strategy to addressing sidewalk issues across the community. We are proposing a multi-year approach to this, instead of the every 15 years, we'll just do everything all at once approach that we've endeavored upon in the past. We'd like to discuss with Council and hopefully get the ball moving on a different type of strategy that sees us working in a specific section of the city, one that would sort of follow the LEAF section, if you can kind of envision that map, strategy where each year, we're working to improve the city's sidewalks, instead of just waiting for a 15-year period. So, with more addition, with more information on that, as well as the proposal in front of you, we have the actual experts on the matter.
Mr. Schuler, how are you?
Thank you, Matt. Good to be here. This is our first step in a while with the sidewalk replacement program. We've been talking about this with Council for a few years now. We've taken some initial steps with a pilot survey, and now tonight, we've got a engineering services proposal before you that will get us closer to sidewalk construction in 2020. Just to reset a little bit, we have done a pilot survey in what we call Section 5, the southwest corner of the city of Berkeley. There's five sections to the city that we technically refer to, and we did a pilot survey in Section 5, otherwise referred to as Friday's section, and that helped us sort of get a handle on what we've got and where we're going, and this will be a work in progress, but it is our intent, as Matt alluded to, to do this program every year for the foreseeable future. So, we're looking forward to taking that first step in 2020, and that first step will be to address the most immediate needs in Section 5, and those are the sidewalks that have the, I guess, the most urgent need, the two inches or above faulting is what we are kind of categorizing those as. So, there are enough of those in Section 5 of the city that the budget that we have allotted for this year, $250,000 of construction funds, we're looking like that's going to be kind of where we're going to be, be able to address those immediate areas, and hopefully even some more areas in Section 5, but at this point, that's sort of our target. Obviously, that depends on how bids come in and a number of factors, but our plan is to go into Section 5 in 2020 and address those immediate two inches or above needs with a low-bid contractor. So, this step is to initiate HRC to prepare a bid spec for that work, and then we will be bidding it out. As property owners, all of us are responsible for the sidewalk in front of our homes or businesses, so this doesn't change any of that. This is a traditional sidewalk assessment program. It's similar to what we did approximately 15 years ago in the city of Berkeley. It's been a while. Communities do these, you know, 10 to 15 years. It's about time to kind of relook at things, so we're due to do that, and we're taking a look at those. So, we're looking forward to getting started with this initial year, and then we'll reevaluate sort of where do we go next. Maybe we look at the immediate concerns in another section of the city. You know, we'll have more money to work with presumably in 2021, because again, this is an assessment program, so the city will be getting the assessment money back from the property owners, and as long as the city continues to seed funds in the budget year, we'll be able to do more and more as time goes on. So, this is the first step. The city has to front all of the construction dollars for this year. So, we have to front that money, and then as assessments come in, we'll be able to, you know, have that money for future years. There is a process here for notifying the residents, so if you're a homeowner and you happen to have one of these or a couple of these sidewalks, HRC will be assisting the city with those notices. Residents will be given time to seek out their own contractor, if that's what they'd like to do. Again, the benefit here with a sidewalk assessment program is we've got these economies of scale with a larger contract, so we'll be able to, in most cases, do this at a lower cost for folks than what would be on the normal market, where it's tough to get somebody to come out to do two slabs. That's very challenging. Oftentimes, they won't even return your call, so this gives us that opportunity, that gives us that vehicle. We're also going to look at, I think, another piece of this, which would be, what if I'm in Section 5 of the city, I've got some sidewalks that I want to replace but are not in that immediate category? Will this program assist me, or can I use it? We're going to explore that option with the city attorney and HRC to see if maybe we can't foster something there. I don't want to promise anything at this point, because there's technicalities there of who's the owner and who's not, but I really want to explore that to see if we can give residents another outlet, given that a contractor is going to be in town if we can't put those two sides together for other sidewalk issues that may not be an immediate concern. So, I think that about sums it up. I'd be happy to answer some questions. I know this is new, that we're coming up, doing another program again, so I'm sure there are some questions.
Roland, anything you would like to add before we...
No, Derek did a great job of summarizing it, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you guys for being here and for following up with this. As we know, the community loves the walkability that we have in our city, and these important steps to ensure that it's safe traveling on the sidewalks is key. I also appreciate that you touched on the communication outreach to the affected property owners and residents and things to ensure that they're aware of what's coming up and have the opportunity to seek others' ideas, and then to your point about the economies of scale, they might come right back. In your memo, you described the construction start window. Could you just highlight a little bit more about that for folks that may not have access to see the details that we can?
Sure, so we're, the plan here is to, again, we're always interested in getting the best unit prices, and going out to bid during the winter months gives us the best opportunity to get the lowest prices. So, we want to go out to bid this winter for the work, and then award the project in the spring and start up in the spring or summer of next year. So, that is our intent, to have, to be breaking ground next spring and summer.
Great, and again, the residents will be notified ahead of time and all that other stuff.
Well, yeah.
So, this, what we have before us tonight is the proposal to put together the package for the Friday section, right, in Section 5. Would we anticipate this same, a similar item coming back before us for each of the subsequent sections, or can we use this one again for, basically, is this package going to be reusable with a few tweaks, or do we need to incur a similar cost for every section that we want to improve going forward?
And I'm sure Roland would agree. I'm sure we'll have realized some savings if we continue on this same path, Roland, in future years. Now, if that path is the same, I mean, if we change direction, if we decide to tackle this a little bit differently, obviously, that's a different story, but if we just continue to go through sections, we'll be able to use this specification and all the templates that we create as a basis for future years.
Nice. That's a way of saying that we wouldn't see this magnitude of expense in subsequent sessions if we kept this direction going.
Yeah, if you remembered earlier in the year, we had a similarly priced proposal to go out and do the actual evaluations. This is the second step of that.
Right, right.
For the next section, if there is another section, we would have a similar type of work product where we'll have to be physically on the streets, walking sidewalks, marking them.
Yep.
That will, that cost will be seen again, but the second portion of it will be much less. It'll be really specific to just contacting residents, giving them their 60 days to fix it themselves, and then developing a bid package. So, yes, the first part will be similar, but the second part will be less costly.
Thank you, that makes sense. Appreciate that.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. In addition to walking the sidewalks and looking for that vertical displacement, what other things are you looking for as you're looking at the sidewalks?
That's a great question. So, obviously, one would be, yes, any vertical separation between adjacent slabs, looking for maybe tree roots, trees that have grown over the sidewalk that may have decreased its width, areas where there's ponding water, areas where there's lots of cracking. You may not see separations in elevation, but you might see a lot of cracks in the sidewalk. So, those lesser types of defects are listed as the lesser categories.
Sure.
So, to be clear, Friday's section, if this goes forward, and we spend the $250,000, there will still be plenty of defects on your sidewalks, but we will have taken care of the low-hanging fruit.
Thank you.
100% of those immediates will be full replacements for the major defects, as it said here, immediate defects, major, 30% full replacement, 70% mudjacking, medium, 75% full replacement, 25%, and then minor, preventative maintenance, 100% of the time is what the plan calls for in that event right now.
Maybe just to clarify, the majors, the mediums, and minors will not be handled as part of this project.
Right, we're just looking at the immediate first, get the full slabs that need to be replaced. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, but in, we're looking at a five-year cycle, and our second time around, we may be able to start picking up those, not as critical, but still important ones, and after a few cycles, we're going to have pretty decent sidewalks, most of the time, just doing a little bit here and there. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just also to point out that the city will be taking care of city-owned sidewalks in the Friday section as well, so you're not asking the residents to do anything that the city is not also stepping up to do on the sidewalks that you own.
Yes, one more, Gavin? Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, just real quick, Roland, can you speak to what the management of the property owner's database is and your cost breakdown? Sorry, I know it's a little...
Which task? Or are you looking at the spreadsheet?
I'm looking at your spreadsheet, yep, at the end, yep.
Councilman, what row are you looking at? Task number...
Let's see, it's under the first section, second, first section, second item.
So, we need to, we need to work with the city in order to obtain, you know, ownership records for the properties, mailing addresses, and then develop the notifications to those residents of you have two slabs in your property that you need to take care of. So, it's the gathering of that data, the gathering of the ownership information, and then putting that into a system that we can automate and send out multiple requests, or multiple mailings over time.
Okay.
So, it's creating a database of ownership information and property owner...
Thank you.
...addresses.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, yes, as a follow-up to that, to what extent will this, will the city proper and our communications folks have an opportunity to review or comment on the template, so to speak? I imagine that much of the communication will follow a similar pattern from one homeowner or residence to the next. Is there an opportunity for, from a branding and marketing perspective for our folks? Because you'll be writing, you'll be contacting the homeowners on our behalf. And so, to the extent that the city has an opportunity to review that, how is that handled in the plan?
Well, we would definitely never send out anything that we didn't get your blessing and comment on, so I would assume we would develop a template, we would share it with Derek, we would share it with Matt, you could have anybody you want review it within the city, and we'd make changes to that. So, yeah, we're not planning to do anything without running it by first, if that's kind of what you're asking.
Use it to my ears. Thank you, sir.
Any other? Councilmember Price?
I was just curious, if, when a resident is notified that they will need to replace a slab of their sidewalk, will you be able to provide an estimate at that point of how much it would cost if they went with not doing it themselves, but with the group bid? I know you haven't received the bid yet, so...
That is kind of the catch-22. I'm sure, you know, we have historical data of what sidewalk replacements cost. We do continue to see price, prices of everything go up over the years, but we could estimate that if a homeowner asked that question. I would probably prefer to answer that on an as-needed basis and not provide. We think it's going to cost us much, because again, it's aggressive, it's a very aggressive bidding climate, whereas in, we're not going to be getting great prices, so I guess it's the opposite of aggressive. And I would, I would be hesitant to commit to a price, because you tell somebody it's going to cost you $900, and that bill comes and it's $1,200. Well, why did you tell me $900? That's what I budgeted for. So, I think that it would be possible to give a estimate, but I would prefer not to and wait for the bids to come out.
I understand that why. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you both for bringing this and answering some questions. Again, the point, or hope, we certainly hope this method of doing things on an annual basis will preclude us having to find ourselves 15 years down the road where we either have to spend significant amount, bond, or millage, anything else, in order to keep our sidewalks as walkable and as safe as we would like them to be, and this is something that's come up for the past couple of years from a number of residents, and what facilitated and began this conversation and has brought us to this point that we're at today. Before moving forward, are there any comments or questions from anybody else this evening before Council votes?
I have a question.
Tammy, come up to the microphone, please.
Is a property owner going to have...
But, can you get, microphone, please?
Is a property owner going to have time to pay you people this money?
You repeat the question? Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, say, okay, you're going to replace my sidewalk, and you want $1,000. How much time am I going to have to pay you?
Eric?
Yeah, I don't know what the, it goes on a property tax... Yeah, I don't know what the, it goes on a property tax-type assessment, so I think there's a period of time there, Matt. I don't know what exactly it will be. It's certainly not going to be something that's going to be weeks, I would imagine. But Matt, I don't know if you know what the exact time would be?
Not the exact time, but there are a couple of different options available to us. We have, we could split it between one, two, and three years. I wouldn't go any farther past that, but a resident would have the opportunity to pay it off over multiple years instead of having to incur that cost all at once upfront.
Okay, that's on that line. So you would have ample time to pay you people.
Yes.
That's obviously an important part, is giving residents time to fund, to come up and...
Interest-free loans, sort of. Yeah, and as a point of clarification, the city is you people in this scenario, so they'll be paid to the City of Berkeley. HRC will not receive any direct payment from any residents.
Us people, yes.
So just taking this point a step further, would there be an incentive to pay in full for, I don't know, a percentage discount or something if a resident chose to do that?
It's not something we've discussed yet, but we could talk, discuss it with finance. I'm not familiar with that as a precedent, but we could certainly have that conversation.
Yeah, just wondering.
It's going to depend on bids and how everything else comes through. But a three-year potential, low interest, no-interest loan would be at least something that hopefully will give our residents enough time to get this together.
So is that going to your taxes? Or would that be a separate bill that would get to pay you?
Tax.
The question was if it was, in case anybody can't hear at home, the question was, would it go on the taxes? The answer to that is yes. So it'd be a special assessment would then appear on your summer tax bill, and you'd pay it off over, again, over the course of a couple of years.
Okay, how about if you sell your house and that bill hasn't been paid?
If you sell your house and it hasn't been paid?
Yes. It would be, I think, a lien on the property that would be paid in full at the point of closing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, Derek and Roland, thank you for being here and explaining this today. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R. 9419? Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. R. 9419 has passed. We now move on to 9519. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M. 9519, matter of authorizing the execution of agreement between City of Berkeley and ATX Builders, Inc., for the sale of 3339 Cummings Avenue, and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R. 95, or M. 9519?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A somewhat unique situation has arose as of recent. A couple of years ago, a property development company called ATX Builders purchased the home at 3339 Cummings, I believe not realizing that it was actually zoned parking and had been so since 1986. The property owner, when they found this out, attempted two rounds of rezoning, one just a full rezoning to residential, and the other one, the next one would be splitting the lot with a portion of it being sold to the city in order to complete a parking lot program, parking lot installation, and the southern portion of it's coming back to residential after, you know, a couple of decades. In both situations, that request was denied. The council, in its wisdom, thought that, you know, there's a real parking issue in the West 12-mile area, we need to be able to maintain this zoning in order to address that issue, and in whatever way that comes up. So fast forward a little bit, and conversations with the property owner, they're unable to really make any significant improvements under the current zoning, so they would essentially be making a couple of superficial improvements, and then at best, being able to maintain the existing property as a rental. Being zoned P1, the city's in a unique position where we could actually make good use of that particular zoning and this property, and solve an issue in the West 12 area. So what I entered into was a negotiations with that property owner, ultimately selling at a price of $160 for that, for that property. It was purchased, was purchased in, I think it was '18, at $130. The assessed value is about $90,000, so if you double that, you get a tentative market rate of about $180. So I think we split the difference really well. The market rate would include both the sale of the property and the home. Obviously, the city is not as interested in the home itself as the property, which was able for us to negotiate a little bit better price than just strictly market rate. Property owner is amenable. They are, they have potentially agreed to this, the document that you have in front of you, and ultimately, it is the council's decision, though, on whether to move forward on this. The intents behind the property remains, the installation of parking lots. Purchasing the entire property does give us the opportunity to buffer the neighborhood and also do some pretty unique things in the vein of the Watertowns presentation, you'll see in a few minutes, where we can add, we have the high potential of being able to add some green infrastructure to address stormwater runoff in a, in one of the city-owned parking lots. Not an opportunity we have right now without making any significant changes, and so it's something we'd be able to point to in the future to say, here's a parking lot, here's stormwater management, all on one site. If we can do it, surely our private property partners across the community can do the same. So it's a lot of potential with this property. I'm excited to bring this to you. And again, I'm open for any questions you may have.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if the city were to zone in mid-'80s, as they did here, zoned at P1 parking, that means that at which point, when this property became available, the city wanted to purchase it and turn it into parking? And hadn't had that opportunity, as you mentioned, it was purchased, it was before us twice for rezoning, and council both times felt that parking was ultimately the goal for that property, as it was originally, or zoned at least in the mid-'80s. And now we are able to start working more through that process. Once we have the property, we can actually talk about what it might look like, but to this point, we haven't had that.
Yes, sir. Absolutely accurate.
Additional questions for Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to support the, and second, the enthusiasm for, the possibility for what this project could bring to that part of our downtown as the liaison through the DDA. We often hear of some of the issues down there, and of course, just as residents and council members, we hear as well. So I'm excited with what this might entail and look forward to, if we were to move forward with this, learning more about what the next steps would be and what this might look like for us in the spring, and going through the site plan and all that kind of cool stuff, and making sure that we engage the residents in the areas, that they're, they like what we're proposing. I think it's a bright future for us.
Indeed. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah. What would be our timeline, looking both short-term, what would we be doing, and then longer-term, how long until it's potentially developed into a parking lot?
If council approves this evening, then we'd want to move forward with the design portion as soon as possible. So hopefully, that can happen through the spring and through the budgeting process. We can budget the costs of actually, actual construction beginning after July 1st.
Okay. And then, are we keeping a lookout for similar properties that might come up? Those that are zoned parking, still residential, and, you know, sort of keeping a watch list for when they come to sale to see if we want to be ones to put a bid on?
Yes, both within the DDA district as well as the adjacent properties. We've gotten a lot better about this. That was one of the ways that we were able to catch this one, too.
If we would have caught this one before it was purchased, we would not be in that position in the first place, but yes.
That's very true.
Good point. Councilmember Blanchard, do you have a question?
Or you?
Councilmember Henan stole my question, so...
Got it? Anything else on this?
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. Is this property actually within the DDA district?
Through the mayor? No, it's not.
It's not?
No, it's, we call it, I guess we call it district adjacent.
District adjacent, okay. My other objection, my real objection then is, I believe the $160 is excessive. True market value on this property is actually close to zero, because the builder can't do anything else with it. He's already tried twice. It can only be used as parking. He can develop his own parking lot, but purchase prices, purchase value of it is virtually zero, because it can only be used as parking. So if he wants to develop his own parking lot, he can go ahead and do that. He can, he can deal with whoever did not do a good title search for him the first time when he actually bought it. And, you know, if he's, you know, claiming ignorance of the fact that it was zoned parking, okay, that's fine, but that's part of due diligence in buying such property if you're going to develop it, is to know how it's zoned. But I would say the $160,000 is excessive for that, for that piece of property. Has the property been inspected for, I know the age of the house, for asbestos and/or lead?
Through the mayor, the purchase agreement does include an inspection period.
So it has not yet been inspected?
No, ultimately, the home is going to be removed under what we're proposing here.
Okay. So then, part of removal is to inspect for lead and asbestos. That has to be abated before the house can be removed?
I believe that was one of the conditions on the purchase agreement.
There is, just like in most real estate purchase agreements, there is a due diligence period provided for after an agreement is reached, if an agreement is reached, that does give the city appropriate period of time to perform whatever inspections are required to the extent of any lead or asbestos, we would look to the inspector to provide us what the information, what needs to be done, if anything, as far as any extra remedial measures. Certainly, there are federal and state laws that apply to control exposure both to workers as well as adjacent property owners for such things, but there's been no determination yet that those are issues.
Then I would ask, I would ask you to make those determinations before settling on a price, because if there is lead and/or asbestos in the building that needs to be abated, you're taking on that expense by not factoring it in, in part of the purchase.
That's, that's not how the purchase agreement is set up.
How is it set up?
The city has, the city has, the purchase moving through at that price is contingent on the city's satisfaction with its due diligence. If the city determines within the due diligence period that it is either dissatisfied or that there are issues that may require a price adjustment, those are things that can be raised with the property owner, and we either reach terms or we have the choice to walk away from, from the deal. So that's the city's protection, and that's, that's a pretty conventional way to deal with buying properties in this, in this way.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, for me, I also do want to address, as I said earlier, the property owner does have the option of maintaining this as an income property through, as a rental or a leased property. And so they, I do disagree with the gentleman's statement that the value is zero. Again, the property owner has options. It wasn't, admittedly, it was not what they purchased the property to do, but they do have options to see income generated by this property.
All right. Thank you. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R. 9519?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. R. 9519 has passed. We now move on to number five, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Resolution R. 40-19, matter of adopting a resolution declaring City of Berkeley's participation in the Watertowns Initiative from Clinton River Watershed Council.
Is there a motion to approve R. 4019? So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Mayor Protem, Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the last couple of, I think, now, months, we've been discussing the potential of joining the Watertowns Initiative, brought to you by the Clinton River Watershed Council. You wouldn't think Berkeley had, being a water town, as we're not immediately adjacent to a water feature like a river or a lake, but we are, in fact, a contributing community to the watershed itself. So everything that goes on the grounds in our, in our fine city, eventually will find its way to the Clinton River, and then ultimately to the Great Lakes themselves. So we are in it, too. This, this also stems on, and really supports our ongoing initiatives to remain regional leaders in stormwater management, and I think this is, this is a fantastic organization to partner with. And this initiative, we're very excited to learn about it. I believe Councilmember Gavin was the first one to bring this to us, but also, we've been meeting with Mark Richardson from the Environmental Advisory Committee as well. So this has been through somewhat of a vetting process before it becomes a council today. We're joined by Chris Bobrick, did I say it right? Okay. Who is representing CRWC today.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to present this to you today. We have been working a lot with, with Matt on getting this initiative going. So just to begin, I'm the watershed planner for the Clinton River Watershed Council, and Matt did a wonderful job that you are within the Clinton River watershed, even though you don't see the water, you do see it indirectly, and especially how it can impact our communities. So the prime mission of the Clinton River Watershed Council is to protect, celebrate, enhance the Clinton River, Lake St. Clair, but in addition to that, it's the water resources, the idea, the conceptual thought of water resources that we are trying to communicate and engage citizens in really understanding. And that's where some of the highly urbanized areas within our watershed, it's really imperative that we focus on engaging our citizens, and that's really a primary goal of the Watershed Council. Now, the Watertowns Initiative is our flagship program that brings technical expertise, it brings art, ecology, culture, all centered around water resources to each of our 72 communities that we serve. Four counties, primarily, all of it being within McComb County and a portion of it also within Oakland County. We do serve 72 counties, I'm sorry, communities. Tack on all the communities around the lake, it expands our service area quite a bit. So a 760-square-mile watershed, that is enormous, if you really, truly think about it, is the most highly urbanized watershed in the state of Michigan that we reside in right now. The Clinton River itself, just kind of a fun fact, 81 and a half miles long, is actually navigable for about 72 miles of it. So I personally have kayaked the majority of that Clinton River, and part of the Watertowns program is telling you exactly that, expressing the idea that we have access to this, even from communities that are a little bit away from it, there's still something to do. The Watertowns program can be dissected into several categories, although I don't like to do that. I think it's, it's a very holistic program, but one of the outstanding portions of it is this green stormwater infrastructure. And so whenever I talk about green infrastructure, it's always that engineered system that we're trying to mimic natural processes, natural hydrologic processes of how water moves across the landscape. We've altered that landscape, and so this program is dedicated to reintroducing some of those natural features that will help filter that first flush of stormwater. This is a graphic I typically like to show that the engineered gray infrastructure that we have in place does a supremely good job at draining and directing and dispatching water. I mean, that's what it's designed to do, and it does it, and it does it very efficiently. However, increased imperviousness, increased variability in weather conditions, as we've seen in 2014 and even more recently, it does drain, direct, and dispatch quickly, therefore, it can be overwhelmed very quickly. And so the idea on the right side of introducing more natural soft engineering elements to our gray infrastructure helps relieve some of that pressure on it. We're not looking to solve all the issues, but we're trying to give it a chance to work as it is once designed. And so introducing some of these greener infrastructure systems not only helps relieve some of that pressure, but it also cleanses and replenishes and restores not even natural features of the environment, but our own human well-being. Just seeing more greener things in a labyrinth of gray concrete, it really does something for the soul. for the soul. The Water Towns program is fully funded by the Fred A. and Barbara M. Herb Family Foundation. We have 22 participating communities, and this would be our 23rd. We accept about two communities a year. It's all centered around, not all centered, but a good majority of it is focused on that green stormwater infrastructure. We really want to try and help communities implement some of these climate-smart mitigation strategies for really thinking about how to approach better stormwater management. So in addition to that green stormwater infrastructure, we also focus on art, history, culture, the ecology of some of these natural systems that we're trying to introduce. Part of that funding, $5,000, will go towards the implementation of one of the proposed projects. It's a match grant, so Watershed Council will front $5,000 on every, on the $5,000 that the city would put in. That can be in-kind, that can be for plant purchases, that can, and we would retain or we would gather some volunteers to help with that project, too. I also have partnerships and sustainability as highlights there. I'd like to emphasize that this isn't a program where the Watershed Council comes in, does your thing with the city, and walks away. This is something that we would like to see through in perpetuity. This is something that we really pride our council ourselves on and are looking forward to forming a partnership and forming a sustainable partnership in that. The timeline that we have is usually about eight months, where we go through introductory meetings. We would like to have a community resolution, which is why I'm here today. This ensures that the city that we are working with is excited as we are to start this, and this really gives us a go-ahead on paying the contractor. Dr. Don Carpenter with Drummond Carpenter Consulting Firm comes in to do renderings for the community, and that really gives us the initial go-ahead, saying, okay, we're on board. After a few months of working with Drummond Carpenter and working with certain individuals from the city, we'll go through a few interim meetings, saying, hey, are we on target with what the city wants? How about this? How about that? And so we'll work together over the next few months to come up with a final plan. And that's when we'll have a final presentation similar to this, except Dr. Carpenter will be up here as well, very animated speaker, and I'm sure you get a kick out of him. And the last portion of that is the product delivery, and one of the most important. It's a little hard drive filled with renderings, these illustrations of what different stormwater infrastructure elements could look like. High maintenance, low maintenance, medium maintenance, how does it look and how does it feel on the city street? And certain products that are designed, with that comes quantity of stormwater retained, the price of each project, and what we can do to lessen that price as well through volunteer or working through the Watershed Council. So next, I just have a few examples. This was from Huntington Woods. This was the most recent installation of a rain garden. So there's Dr. Carpenter sizing up very precisely of how big the rain garden's going to be. This is the rendering that includes a raindrop of percentage, and that's the percentage of runoff that is retained over time every year with that system. That's how much it would cost if it was done professionally, how much it would cost if volunteers were used in addition to some professional insight, and this is what was We worked with some of their environmental council for the planting. We had volunteer labor. CRWC paid for the plants, and Huntington Woods let me use one of their front-end loaders, which was phenomenal. And so we finished this project for about, I think Huntington Woods paid about $1,200, and then we matched that. So the remaining money is now being used for a long-term maintenance plan that would span over four years. Installation like this, using native plants, three-year establishment periods, what we usually recommend or promote of what to expect, and that maintenance plan that's going to be used will help ensure that those plants are going to be sustained and grow and be vibrant. Clinton Township, this was a parking lot retrofit, I'm sorry, this was a completely redone. This was a parking lot that was at the end of its life, and so they wanted to do something that would implement some green infrastructure. So they used not all of the renderings that were produced from Water Towns, but they did take some contextual things from it, and these are just some of the parking lot islands that were introduced with a very simple plant palette that would be, help their DPW maintain it very easily, fewer plants to worry about, and you actually know what they will look like. This is Sterling Heights. You see the old parking lot on the left and the new parking lot design. Again, we focused on the parking lot islands. Instead of having a concave, they inverted those islands to make it a retention, to be able to retain water and plant that with native plants, and this is what was actually And so, actually, this is on the right side, a third example from Clarkston, where we actually built a, one of the residents was very excited about this program, so he donated the bridge. It's about $120,000 bridge. So he was very excited about this program. So centered around that bridge, we installed rain gardens and actually had a stream bank restoration project involved with that as well. So some takeaway home, some takeaway messages here, there's no cost to any community. You receive that rich, that data-rich package with quantities, volumes of stormwater retained, $5,000 mini-grant. I'm going to jump down to what you can actually use that data for. You can apply for grants. That's what the Watershed Council is here, is to help with any technical expertise in writing these grants. You can use that $5,000 match mini-grant as match money for any other grant through state or federal organizations. And to be a leader in green stormwater infrastructure is one factor that many communities have come away with this program. They see this as an opportunity to start thinking differently about how to mitigate their stormwater. Whether you're by a river or not, that water affects everybody. And so part of this program is engaging or re-engaging residents to water resources and then helping communities really resolve or help mitigate some of their stormwater management issues. So with that, I thank you very much for your time. I could probably sit here for another two hours and talk to you about this.
We do appreciate that. We do have a few other things on the agenda tonight. But Chris, thank you for being here and doing an excellent presentation, explaining to everybody here what exactly we're talking about. Questions or comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a thank you to Chris and the administration for working so hard on this, and along with the Mark Richardson and the Environmental Advisory Committee putting in work on this as well, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I, too, want to thank you and the Environmental Committee for all the work that you've done on this, and I'm very encouraged and excited about the possibilities of things that we can do here in Berkeley to mitigate our stormwater. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Everybody agrees? And just to reiterate, I pull it, if you want to go back, it said no cost.
No cost to the communities.
Thank you. Not that if there was a cost, it would be prohibitive, but thank you for that, and it's exciting. Again, this is something that we continue to look at ways, especially on the retention side of things in our community, and this seems like a great way to gather data-rich bundle, get a lot of data and have a lot of various options as we move forward and the potential for mini-grants in the event that we can have some of these projects come to fruition. So thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R 4019?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Presentations, matter of offering a six-month update on the Coolidge Complete Streets Project to the City Council.
This is a presentation, I want that to be clear. There is no vote on anything being taken tonight, and this is the beginning of the first evaluation point in this safety project, so... Mr. Baumgarten?
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. I'll be your presenter this evening. This, I'll be...
Good on lights, or we need to hit one? I don't know if anyone can, is that okay? Can everybody see?
Good. Okay. I'll be your presenter this evening, but please know that the vast majority of the information being presented this evening was brought to you by the Transportation Improvement Authority, or TIA, as you'll hear me refer to them shorthand for most of this presentation here, as well as with inputs from Berkeley Public Safety, and I'll be also discussing a lot of the feedback I received from just Berkeley in general. And so I'm your messenger this evening. Going over the Complete Streets Project, the road diet, whatever a person wants to call it, as I joked in previous presentations, I'm not a fan of the word diet, so I stopped using it, and I just called it the Coolidge Complete Streets Project. So a couple of things that we'll be talking about this evening, just going through an overview, a timeline, observations, feedback, some of our traffic volume speed studies, and then as well as the next steps. As we've talked about in the past, so Coolidge was restriped in May, we actually kicked off on May 13th of this year, and we concluded about June 4th. And so we really, this week actually marks the true six-month point of the completion of the project. It's a two-year pilot, and as we've stressed many, many times, truly is just a study period here. So we are studying this effect. We want to see what changes could potentially be made permanent down the line, but as of right now, we have just focused on literally the paint on the ground. And so that is really the only thing that has changed up to this point here, and it was for the specific mile stretch between 12 and 11-mile roads. One of the biggest changes and sort of the crown jewel of the project is the installation of a continuous left turn lane. That, as you recall from Coolidge of the past, was intermittent. So leading up to centralized intersections, you'd see a left turn signal sort of come out of the double-stripped lane, and it was about 100 feet long or so, and it would just hold some vehicles, but really, it was just specific to servicing the intersection itself. Those that were trying to turn mid-block or visit their favorite Berkeley store or just sometimes even go down their own street running off Coolidge, they would have to sit in the travel lane and wait to make that turn and wait until two lanes cleared so that they can jet across and get to where they were going. So we thought first and foremost that the left turn signal, the continuous left turn line, lane would be what would make this project the most safe of any other of our projects. Prior to the study, we went through and did some baseline measurements, as you recall, not just Coolidge itself, but also did speeds, volumes, peak hour studies on our side streets as well, to make sure that if people begin to divert off of Coolidge, that we can measure where they're going and make sure that they're not creating unsafe situations in the neighborhood streets. That data is what you'll see followed up on this evening. The data for the pilot was posted on the website, as is the six-month stuff as well. In addition to that data itself, we've been taking the feedback from our residents, from our businesses, from users, from departments. Pretty much, if you have to offer it, we'll take it. We've been collecting it all under the CoolidgeRoad@berkleymesh.net. So yeah, so our timeline here, as I mentioned earlier, May 13th was the start of the project date. I've got an updated version here. May 4th is when we consider the project to be substantially completed. That's when the lane striping was finished up and the box signalizations and all the different support elements. There were some additional signage that happened thereafter, but again, like I said, this week really does mark that substantial completion, and we really are on the six-month mark this week. So some of the next steps we're looking at, we're still trying to schedule a task force meeting. We set up a task force of about 10 different people to sort of go over this data. As you can imagine, scheduling 10, getting 10 schedules to align for a meeting has been difficult. We had an informational meeting scheduled for November 21st that we had to push back, so we actually have that, it'll be on the calendar as December 19th now, and so that'll be an update coming out. I think it's on the city's calendar now, but again, I believe that's a Thursday night, December the 19th, we'll be having our community informational meeting, covering a lot of the same topics, but also any new information that we get from the Transportation Improvement Authority. On the topic of data, one of my favorite topics, we went through when we did, there are six, or there are, I forget the exact number, but there are, we took information, data points on Kipling, north and south of Catalpa, on Coolidge, north and south of Catalpa, as well as on Berkeley, on Beverly, on Kenmore, and Kipling. So essentially, all the streets that run parallel to Coolidge and as well as taking information of Beverly as well, which we knew was a main feeder to Coolidge as we have studied it so far. TIA also did some additional studies on Kingston. Kingston runs, it's south of a level mile, it runs in Oak Park as well as Huntington Woods, too. So they've got, they're also taking some information, some studies, and some, collecting some data for our neighboring communities since, as we've been discussing, this is a regional road, so we're helping out our neighbors as well and also getting their input. Now into the data. So what you see before you is the yellowish version you see here represents our baseline measurements for each of the side streets, and you'll see the exact locations in which they were taken there, the house numbers. You see Beverly and where we took that. The map also shows the exact location as well. You'll see what those numbers look like on northbound and southbound and eastbound and westbound. So again, trying to be as transparent as humanly possible, not just aggregated numbers, but also, as you can see, actually, northbound and southbound, how people travel. Updated in the subsequent orange boxes, you'll see those six-month numbers. In the bottom portion, you'll see the differential between the two. So we look at not only the number of, the difference in numbers between the actual number of vehicles traveling up and down those streets, but also a percentage change as well. And that's laid out very clearly. You'll see in some instances, we saw increases, in some instances, we saw decreases, as you can expect. One of the larger changes, and one of the people that, one of the group of residents that we heard from the most were those along Kipling. We did see an increase in traffic volumes on Kipling, particularly in the south area. The north side actually saw a bit of a decrease during the study period, but the south side, that is right up just south of Catalpa, we are seeing increases there. Now, the studies we've seen so far, they're within what we talked about as being acceptable parameters, but it's something that we're going to be incredibly cognizant of. Public safety has had a presence down there, especially in the weeks and probably the first couple of months following the initial change, public safety had a heavy presence down there in order to try to keep the speeding volumes down, and you'll see the fruits of that labor next. Oh, I'm sorry, Catalpa, looking specifically at Coolidge, we actually got some of this information as of today even. As you recall, we actually did Coolidge twice. We initially talked about, we initially did the data collection of side streets as well as Coolidge. We did those at the end of September, first week in October. We kept them out for, from Monday, the 30th, all the way out through the following Wednesday. And so it was nine full days of data collection. We were actually able to contrast the effect of no school on the Monday and Tuesday of that week, contrast that with the following week, Monday and Tuesday, where they did have school. So interesting opportunity to collect some data. Coolidge, when we got the numbers back, in addition to the test strips, they were also doing hand counts for turning movements from Coolidge onto Catalpa. They couldn't get them to jive internally, and so the counts on Coolidge seemed artificially low, and so that's why we had to come out and retest them between the 18th and the 20th of November. Again, I got... Again, I got those numbers in today, so these are fresh off the digital presses, if you will. So, interesting. We'll continue to sort of analyze what these means, but did want to deliver the raw numbers, where we actually seem to see a flip-flop of where the heavier volumes are. On the baseline years, baseline study, you saw that the lower numbers actually were on the south side of Catalpa, and north side carried the heavier load. That actually inverted in the six months. And again, we're going to continue to work with TIA, as well as city's traffic engineers, to see what lessons we can glean from that. But it was an interesting flip there. Overall, you'll see the numbers are pretty consistent between the two periods. Out of the mile-wide, the mile-long corridor, we had about 38,000 in both instances. And so, we were worried about there being leakage. We do, it does appear that Coolidge, as a whole corridor, is still carrying pretty close to being the same amount. The differential is less than a single percentage. Peak hour traffic? We looked at this specifically because, like rush hour, people seem to, where you see the most vehicles traveling down your street, that's one of the reasons why we kept this as a relevant data point, is at its height, when there are more, for the hour-long period where there are more cars than any other hour, what does that look like? You may have a fairly acceptable average on any one of these streets, but if it's heavily concentrated in a single period, we wanted to know that. We wanted to make sure that we were tracking that data point. So, that's why it remains up here now. So, you'll see the various streets, where those are. It's important to notice, note that these are the, again, the high points. The peak hours don't always match. So, Kipling's peak hour may be at a different time period than Beverly's, might be a different one than Berkeley's. Some have an AM height, some have a PM height. But we wanted to at least capture and boil down, at what point are the most vehicles traveling down this road, and what is that number? You see that information delivered for you today here. You see some changes there. One of the things that we, again, continue to watch is Kipling, south of Catalpa. That, we saw the greatest increase there at peak hour. So, in that hour period where most vehicles are driving down there, it went from having 105 vehicles in the course of an hour to 168 in the course of an hour. The difference is about 63 vehicles, which accounts to just about 1.5 vehicles per minute over the course of that hour on average. You know, you've got three vehicles following each other down the street. Maybe you'll go another couple of minutes without seeing one, but we were concerned with the total number here. So, again, you'll see how that information has changed and differed. And then, we continue to break this down by vehicle per minute, because I think most of our residents, as they're sitting down and they're seeing vehicles go by, that's sort of the mental judgment that they're making is, man, there's a lot of cars on my block today. And I'm seeing them, seeing them pretty frequently. Speeds, as I alluded to earlier, we continue to track speeds as well. So, you'll see how those change. This is an area where we just didn't see as much change. Thank you, Berkeley drivers. You're, on aggregate, a very safe bunch. The average speeds are actually well under posted speeds. So, most of our residential streets are about 30 miles an hour, and on average, people are doing six to seven miles lower than that even. So, really, really doing a good job of protecting our neighborhoods and, you know, not putting our fellow Berkeley residents in any sort of danger by traveling too fast down the streets. Again, average, there are outliers. We've all seen them, driving down our own streets, I'm sure. But again, on average, Berkeley drivers are being incredibly respectful of their own neighborhoods. Crash types and frequencies, another important data point, is we talk about the road safety. We've looked specifically here at Coolidge. Public safety was able to run some numbers on crashes that we've had. We compared it to the same period from 2018, to see how it's, that's our pre and our post here. And you'll see that there are some changing numbers as far as what types of accidents we're seeing, but the total crashes were actually even. We saw 24 crashes in the same period in 2018. We saw 24 crashes in the same period in 2019. Certainly, the instances differ a little bit. We see rear-end increase. Again, we're going to be looking at what the national average looks like as distracting driving, distracted driving becomes a more relevant issue across Detroit and across the country. What role, how does a change of six crashes, how does that compare to national averages? But also, we're looking at things like side swipes going down, as we talked about before. Coolidge, when Coolidge would stop, we'd see people jutting out into the travel lane that's still moving. That's where we saw our side swipe accidents. We saw those decrease, thankfully. Angle crashes, so as people are driving out, trying to make a left turn maybe, or they're going broadside to movement of vehicles, we did see those go down. We had one head-on accident. In the accident report, it said the lady swerved and missed a cat. So, I don't know if the road diet necessarily is at fault there, or if it's a fault of a cat, but she actually swerved into the, swerved into the left-turn lane, struck a vehicle head-on there. And then, we had, as discussed in years past, we've had, we've had some motorists, vehicle and bicyclists, and vehicle and motorists incidents as well. Those have remained consistent from one year to the next. Moving to the additional information section, you'll see that total injuries reported in crashes did increase from five to seven. Now, that's somebody who verbally informs an officer at the scene of an accident that they feel as though they've been injured in some way. So, that's, the threshold is pretty low there. But, so, in order to put some context to that, last year in the same period, we had four individuals transported by ambulance to an hospital, and in this situation, we had only one, and that one was a couple of weeks ago, prior to the Thanksgiving holiday. And so, that's kind of where we're at on this. So, crash, we're encouraged by this. We had hoped to see more of, perhaps, more of a decrease in the number of traffic accidents. But it's also quite possible, looking at previous trends, that just being able to stabilize it, and not see that grow year over year, is in itself a positive movement. In addition to the hard data that we looked at, we're also doing a couple of additional items, based on the feedback that we've gotten. A number of cars have reported that they'd really like to see a left-turn signal like Catalpa off Coolidge. So, we've been doing hand counts there, counting the number of people that are making that turn. Certainly, the high school plays a huge role in that. We see busy, we see Coolidge become very busy, Catalpa become very busy during the hours where schools, during, where students are arriving and departing the high school. So, there's potential to have, to make an improvement to the road corridor there as well. We continue to look at timing for traffic lights and signalized intersections. I think we made two adjustments over the course of the most, this test period so far, specifically at Harvard and 11 Mile. Those lights were adjusted in order to accommodate flow of traffic and help things flow a little bit easier. The Road Commission has been our partner on that. They do all the signal modifications for us, and TIA generates essentially a data package for them. They take it under consideration, and then they make the changes from there. And the amount of time it takes to travel the mile. So, in fact, even today, just a little bit before we started this meeting, I was getting additional data about AM corridor study, timing studies, midday corridor timing studies, and evening corridor timing studies. So, those of us that feel as though we sit in traffic a lot more on Coolidge than we used to, we do have baseline data for that. And then, again, we're still in the process of collecting what Coolidge now looks like, and how much more time do we spend sitting in traffic? Is it significant? Does it, does it result in a downgrade of the level of service we have in this corridor or not? So, again, those things are all ongoing. And then, we also work with our neighbors in Huntington Woods as well. We're not the only ones affected by this, 11 Mile. The change at 11 Mile, does, they see more backups. So, we've been talking to their public safety departments. I've been speaking with my counterpart there, and what some issues that could potentially be remedied, as it happens. They partnered with City of Berkeley and Oak Park, and Huntington Woods is also looking at the potential for reforming Coolidge into extending the road diet south of 11 Mile, probably to 696 is what the two communities are looking at now. So, they, they like this enough to study it, and are potentially moving forward on it, depending on, I think, in large part, the results that we see on our corridor study as well. Some of the observations and feedback we've gotten, thank you for everyone who has offered that up, and additionally, thank you for everyone who's kept it very constructive. We've looked at things like functionality for public safety, how do emergency vehicles move up and down the corridor? In this regard, the results have been very positive. Public safety, our ambulance company, they are very, very excited about the increased feeling of safety and the level of ease with which they can move up and down the corridor. So, as they respond from our corner right here, if they've got to go all the way down to 11 Mile, or if they've got to go anywhere down Coolidge, they really feel their experience is far safer than it was before. Specifically, they pointed the, they don't have to go into the oncoming traffic at all anymore. They're able to utilize either the existing lane, or the continuous left-center turn lane, in order to travel down the streets. And they like that they don't have to cross the center lane into oncoming traffic. As mentioned earlier, we've done a feedback on the left-turn lane at Catalpa, being something that is really desirable. We've got a ton of feedback on the future of the bike lanes, almost every aspect of it. Do we continue it? Do we move it? How do we get more people driving on there? How do we get less people driving on there? Many, many facets have been covered in the bike lanes, so we do invite people to keep it coming. We, we'll see Mogo rollout in April. They will have a bike station located at Earlmont. We will, we'll get to see the effects of how many of those individuals elect to use the bike lanes to travel. But this does meet our city's overall goals of providing opportunities for multimodal transportation. So, if you're a walker, we provide sidewalks. Sidewalk may not be full all the time, but we continue to provide it. Bike lane may not be full all the time, but we could continue to provide it, because it does, it does serve a purpose. And it meets a goal, just like the travel lanes, just like the parking lanes do. So, the other observations we've gotten, people have reported having a difficult time making a left turn from a side street onto Coolidge. We're looking at ways at trying to address that feedback. The 12-mile intersection, the potential for moving it to mirror sort of the 11 Mile, where instead of the transition lane coming south, south of the intersection, perhaps having it happen at the north side. And then, again, rush hour backups. We, Coolidge, we see backups on Coolidge, just like every other Metro Detroit street does in the AM and PM rush hours. But is there a way that perhaps with light timing, or some other improvements, is there a way to maybe address that as well? Again, and we're relying heavily on the data there from our corridor timing studies, too, to find out when exactly we see the most backups, and how consistent it is with other Metro Detroit streets. Additionally, if anybody's looking for additional information, again, we have an entire project website built for this. The baseline raw data is there. Every bit of the data that I discussed here this today is also there, the raw data from the six-month study, some additional background information on specifically four-lane to three-lane conversions, and how they work, and where they see the most benefits. And I want to remind everybody that we have a narrative document, as well as the matrix, the metrics matrix, which the task force will be updating in the coming weeks, can all be found on the city's website. So, we hide nothing. And I believe that is the last of it.
Hold on a second, please. I know what's coming. So, I want to be very clear. This is a presentation today. This is in no way meant to support or change anything. As Mr. Baumgartner mentioned, most of their, a lot of this data is still coming in. The interdisciplinary group has not had a chance to meet yet. We will be having a public information session, as was mentioned, on the 19th. There will be ample opportunities to continue discussing this project. I want to make that clear before we get into the long, protracted back-and-forth on, well, this says this, and that's not right, and other people say it is right. Unlike some of the other things that have come up in this community, there doesn't seem to be much middle ground as it relates to Coolidge. You either hate it, and think it's the worst thing in the world, or you love it. There's not a lot of eh in the middle of it. So, please keep in mind that it's okay to be passionate. Let's refrain from making accusations about anybody, anybody who supports it, or anybody who maybe has just made a presentation on it. For the sake of remembering, this needs to be a dialogue, and we need to be able to have a legitimate conversation where we don't get overrun with emotion, and we actually just talk and look at the actual merits of whether it makes sense, or it doesn't make sense, so ultimately, we can make the best decision for the entire community. Is that clear? I'm looking for an audible yes. Thank you. Mr. Height? Come on down.
Good evening. How's it going? Now, is there any way you can put the first chart back up for the, where you showed the street counts? Because my concern is, not whether or not I really like Coolidge or not, my concern is with the data and how it's been collected, how it was decided to be collected from the beginning. And first, I want to mention that, you know, generally, you mentioned it in your narrative where you wanted to find, and this is what the goal usually is in a traffic study, what the normal conditions for most roads in Coolidge and the side streets. So, in order to do that, you would assume, okay, you're going to, you're going to take a count on a specific set of days, and then, when you do the evaluations, you're going to count on the same days for the same time period of each day on each road. Okay? And then, you're going to use the data same consistently all throughout when you're comparing them. Now, when you look at, on the baseline in March, all the data showing for Kipling, Beverly, Berkeley, and Kenmore are all the highest number counted on any particular day for two days. Actually, it was a day and 23 hours. So, if you got 322, you didn't average that number, you took 322 as your baseline data. But when you compare the data over here for the six-month, that's an average. You don't find 376 counted for any of the days. You took all seven days, including Saturday and Sunday, and averaged the number, so it lowered the number that was actually counted for that road. So, I don't think it's fair to use it like that. You have to have a consistent way to compare the data. You have to go back to the beginning and average this data over here, and pick the same days that you counted for the first data, and compare the same days for the same time periods. You can't take seven days and average it out and compare it to two days, really not even complete two days. So, going forward, you have to count on the same days that you counted previously. You can count on all seven days, but the data you're using has to be consistent. Then, when you go, so the percentages are all off, it doesn't really show. They may be 30% higher on most roads, but when you're comparing averages compared to peak, the highest number you found originally, I think that's, that's an issue. Now, if you go to the next page, Coolidge...
Wait, before we move on, I do want to correct. This is an average versus peak here.
You know, this right here is the peak number, the highest number you counted that street, every day.
Kurt, grab the microphone, because people can't hear you.
Stay there, yeah.
Okay. So, when you look at Kipling, south of Catalpa, 322 was the highest number counted, period. It wasn't an average number. 506 was the highest number you counted, I think it was the 21st. I might be wrong on the date. But if you look at this number over here, this 601 is not the highest number. It's actually the average of seven days counted, and then you averaged it. So, it makes it look like it's only a little bit higher, because you included Saturday and Sunday, as well as whatever other days, including a holiday, and it was all average. So, you can't do that. You have to, if you counted for Tuesday through Thursday, which really was Tuesday starting at 11 o'clock till Thursday ending at 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock, you have to count, you have to take the data from the same time period, and if you want to average it, average it. You can still take a peak and compare that, too. But you have to average the data and create a normal, so it kind of rules out when you're getting a spike. Because to take, to always just take the spike and say, like, right here, there was another spot where you used peak, and unfortunately, that kind of skews things, too, but that's a longer discussion. I just wanted to talk about how this right here was inaccurate, you know, as far as, you're comparing averages to peak data, and that's inaccurate.
Yeah. So, I'd be more than happy to go over exactly how we try to make these comparable between the two. Where we're using peak, we're calling out peak. The volumes, we endeavor to do just what you're saying, so make sure that we have comparable numbers between the two. Yeah, discounting days when school's not in, discounting weekends. I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and kind of go over it. I'll even invite our representative from TIA.
Okay. And if you go to the next page, I want to show you. The next pages were another concern that I've had. Okay. Now, right here, the first baseline data that you took is actually an error that you made. You have 19,307 written down for North Catalpa. That actually is the number, the actual count, the highest number that was counted for the, for the two days that they counted, South Coolidge, 19,307. That, you mislabeled that. The 18,806, I don't know where you got that number from, because the total number, the highest number counted on Coolidge, North of Catalpa was actually 1,700, 573. And if you look at even what M., or Oakland County lists as the data, the number 19,000 would be more con... would, would be more consistent with southbound Coolidge. Now, as far as with the.
That, that was the average daily traffic for that stretch?
Right, but, but.
The raw data.
No, but no, it was 19,307 was actually the highest number counted on Coolidge southbound, south of Catalpa, not north of Catalpa. You have it mislabeled.
Okay.
If you, if you actually pull up the data and look at it, it's mislabeled. The, the, the actual total number that counted should have been 17,573. Now, the six-month data, I think there's a mistake here as well, because when you look at the numbers that you have on the first page of your merge sheet, you have listed for, for, for north of, north of Catalpa, you have 7,225 and 7,259. If you add those up, now, I'm assuming that's average. Again, apparently, you decided to use peak here or something, because that only comes to 14,500.
Are you talking about on the stuff that we posted today? Remember, I.
Yeah, you said the volume September, October, that's the counts you have on there.
Remember, these are the updated on the November, the November ones, as indicated here, between the 18th and the 20th.
Okay, because this is just what's on the website.
Coolidge, yeah, the initial, as I mentioned in my presentation, the initial round of Coolidge was uniquely low. We, we knew that 14,000 was not going to be.
Okay, I just, I was confused, because last week, that, that document wasn't on this website, and all of a sudden, it was popped up. It just confused me that you would, knowing that you're going to have a new count come out, that you would put a document out, knowing that it was inaccurate. I mean, it was already late. We didn't have that information until last week, so I don't.
The updated information was, we received it today, we posted it today.
The, the numbers I have right here, if that was posted today, then that doesn't match what you have here.
That's the average daily traffic. That's not the, that's not peak. That's average daily traffic. For the six-month.
All right.
And again, but then again, but just make sure, though, the metric specifies that you're going to collect the data for seven days, and then you're going to average it. We need to decide, are we averaging the data, or are we comparing peak to peak, or peak to average? You got to be consistent. You can't pick and choose what data you're going to show. I believe that you got to show average data, because it rules out when you have a spike that you can't account for. If you're only counting for two days or three days, if you have a spike on a, on 12:30, and it all of a sudden, you got 100 extra cars, and you say, that's our peak number, and if, as long as we don't go over that number, we're okay, it doesn't, it doesn't do service to the, to the residents when you're supposed to be comparing normal data, and, and if you're averaging it out, you're not, you're not taking into account that peak. You know, so therefore, 90 cars might seem like a lot.
Matt, I just, I think that's an extremely valid point and a fair point. We need to compare apples to apples. If, if somehow these numbers are not showing that, then we need to make sure they show that. I know we have a conversation scheduled so that we can go through all of this in depth to make sure that the numbers all.
I, I just wanted to make sure we were clear that we're seeing this, and we're hearing that it's less than, than we're expecting, and I just want to be clear, it's not, because we're seeing averages number compared to peak.
And as I mentioned, this is not.
Right.
Today is not a value judgment either way. We are not.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
It's, we're getting the numbers, and we want to really look into this. Additional questions or comments or thoughts, again, on the presentation of the first round or these numbers here? Again, there's a long way to go in this evaluation process. We want it to be as involved as possible. Residents have, have a chance. We've certainly gotten emails, again, both pro and con, either the project in general or some specific aspects of that. That is where we're, we're going to continue this, but there will be ample opportunity for input as we move through this process. Council members. Sure.
So, you hear me? This is good? Okay.
Yes.
I'm Eric Smith. I'm from Berkeley on Tyler. And I just had a couple of comments. I've actually emailed once or twice and gotten a response from, actually, I think a majority of you also. It's been nice to have that kind of feedback and back and forth. It's, it's encouraging. It was also encouraging to have this actually happen in Berkeley. It's not really the time or place to get into whether the data is, is accurate or not necessarily. I guess there's another time for that. But I just wanted to talk about a few things that I've noticed. It's actually been really nice to see the middle lane be a dedicated left turn lane. I didn't really think about it that much until I actually saw it in, you know, in action, where you see an ambulance going down the road at whatever speed they really want to. There's already enough difficulty of people, like, getting over when they should, but to have that extra sense of safety in, in the city is actually really nice, especially with Beaumont nearby. I think it'd be interesting, again, not going to argue the, the data, but it would be interesting to see what the standard deviation is on a lot of these data points, particularly on speed, and that's all I'm going to say about the data. Anecdotally, from, from my own experience, again, I think the drive down Coolidge is way less stressful. It's really nice not to have weaving lanes, parking coming in and out of a lane that's sometimes parking, sometimes not. Can you see the lines during the winter or not? It, it was really confusing beforehand, and I think anybody who's lived here for more than a couple of years can really say, actually, you know, I would think we can all agree, at least, that it, it was pretty stressful to move back and forth between these lanes. I know there are other issues, and I think that we could probably improve on them as it looks like you're looking at it. It's, it feels like, I think, well, no, I'm not going to get into the data again. From an anecdotal point of view, again, going down Coolidge, walking down, biking down, driving, I feel like I actually know a little more about the businesses in our city, which is really strange. I didn't know that there was a bookstore, or a soup store, or a, a collectible shop on Coolidge, or, you know, a workspace for remote workers. You don't notice these things unless you're actually slowing down, ideally to a walking pace, but driving around, you're able to actually see some things, as opposed to sort of having your head on a swivel to see who's going to dart in and out of a lane. It's really easy to park down there. You can sort of just go in and, and come back out. It's, don't have to look for parking in one of these really cramped parking lots. So I find myself being able to patronize a few of the places a little more, go to the library a little more. And just the last point, I use the bike lane against kind of my own, like, conventional thinking, is this really dangerous to be in a, in a main road, you know, feet from a car? And I was really surprised, sort of taking my life into my own hands, I was a little surprised, actually, as to how safe it felt. I've used Coolidge before, biking up and down, biking up and down Coolidge, I've done that before, from like the library to Catalpa, et cetera, and it's a nightmare. It's hard to do on a sidewalk. It's illegal to do on a sidewalk, as far as I know. It's really dangerous. And the drivers were really respectful going down Coolidge. It was just an overall very positive experience. And I just would request the city council to sort of take a holistic view of this and look into not only the data, but the quality of life. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Davis. I live at 3226 Phillips here in Berkeley, and I am the mother of one of the children that was hit by a car on Coolidge. So you're road diet, I will not get in my soapbox here, but I'd like to understand in your crash data, Mr. Baumgartner. When was that data taken from? What was that timeframe?
It was, let me go back to that section there. It was May 13th through, May 13th through today, in both 2018 and 2019.
So does that data also include the two children that were hit, since it's not a crash necessarily, it was pedestrian? So does that include that data?
No, that was prior to the project starting.
That's, okay. So let's not forget that we are a walking school district, and while we are talking about all the vehicles up and down this road, the most important portion of this is ensuring the safety of these children. Okay? So I want us to think about that very clearly as we decide, if you decide to move forward with this. And I'm going to make it my mission to be at every meeting from here on out. But we need to pay attention to this and understand that our children, not only the high school students, but the Anderson Middle School students cross Catalpa every day to get to and from school. So you are talking about, about half of your children cross that street. You have pedestrian crosswalks that are closed now with ugly construction things that you put in place as a part of this. Did we think about what could happen when we didn't put overhead lights like Clausen does, like many other cities do, to illuminate that for people to know that there are cars coming? As you said, that distracted driving is a large portion of the problem that we have nowadays. We did nothing to ensure with, other than these blinking lights on the sides of the road, to let people know. I implore you to not only think about the traffic and the cars, but about the children, because they just can't be replaced. And we are almost one year from when he was hit, and it took us over six months to get back, and I am thankful every day that he did not die. I hope that no parent in this room ever has to get that phone call. But I think this is a terrible idea. Horrible.
Additional questions? Comments? All right, seeing none, we will end the presentation and move on to our next item, item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O-1519, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to add new Article 15 marijuana businesses to Chapter 30 Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to adopt local licensing regulations and operational standards for marijuana businesses. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall Library and Community Center.
Is there a motion to approve O-1519?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Approved by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Okay. The next two items both regard marijuana in our community. It has come to my attention that the last time that we spoke about marijuana, some people construed me as coming off as mean and not letting people talk. So I will reiterate that I do not endeavor to be mean in this forum, but here's what I do endeavor to be. The city council is responsible to the residents of Berkeley. I will not, and we will not, entertain your business plans or your reasons as to why we should change this ordinance to suit those needs. If you have feedback, if you have ideas, I'm all for that. I am not here trying to stifle anybody from saying anything. But when it starts going down into the pretty clear why you're saying things, because it certainly suits specific needs for you or your potential business, that is where I'm going to stop, because we are not making that decision. That is not what this council is going to be doing, and it's not what we're here to do. I'm not going to legislate your business ideas, and I'm going to hit the gavel, and we're going to move on. If you have feedback specific to the ordinance or questions, you are more than welcome to come up and ask those. I'll even say with a smile, I am not trying to be mean. I sincerely mean this. Please don't construe that as me trying to stifle conversation. What I want to hear is from the residents, the business owners of the city, so we can clarify, answer any questions. Again, I don't want to hear your business plans or why we need to change this ordinance to specifically fit that plan. Are we good?
Yes.
Again, audible. Yeah. It's a team game. I imagine you're all here for this, because you haven't left yet for this and then this. Okay. All right. I want to have a great conversation. Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Typically, we'll have second readings on the consent agenda, but given the amount of interest in this particular item, we've moved into the regular for you. I want to start this evening by going through a, or Mr. Hill going through a overview of our licensing process, as well as what essentially, what this second reading boils down to here. We're joined this evening not only by Dan Hill, but also Aaron Schluto and John Sterren. Of course, that has essentially been our marijuana policy team up to this point. We've taken input from a number of different sources, but the four of us are the ones that have been meeting regularly to hone this ordinance, as well as the zoning ordinance. And so with the mayor's permission, Mr. Hill will take us through his presentation, and then we'll follow up on some of the items that are a little bit different from the last time we spoke.
Good evening. So we're just going to jump right in. So this is basically a rundown of what the application would look like as a developer. So say, somebody wanted to submit an application, this is the process, they'd go through the tentative timeline that would happen. So first, the applicant would submit their application materials. This includes a completed application, their non-refundable application fee for each license type, conceptual renderings, and a basic site plan, just so that the basics can be covered. We, by no means at this level, are requiring an engineered site plan, because that would be later in the process. After this, the community development director, as well as her department, would ensure completeness of the applications. So going through, making sure all of the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, every signature and acknowledgement is done. If there is something missing, so say, one of the stakeholders forgets to sign one of their acknowledgements, she would reach out to them. They would have two weeks to respond back and submit those complete, those incomplete items and remediate the missing information.
Do we think that one week is enough time for the community development director to ensure? In, in the event that we have a large number of potential applications, I just don't want someone to be stuck here.
I will let her answer as to whether or not she feels that is.
And I'm not saying that it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a best practice, but in the event that we, we have had significant interest, or in the event that we have a lot of applications, I just don't want to get you stuck into a one-week timeframe.
Thank you. We want to make sure that there is a tight timeline, so that way we can look at everything right away and get these turned around quickly. I am going to be developing a pseudo-checklist that makes sure that when they submit what they have, I can just go right through, check, 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 check. So hopefully, it shouldn't take longer than a week to go through all of these, especially if I have a, a system of a checklist.
Okay. Thank you.
But thank you.
In addition to that, Mr. Mayor, we, as Dan mentioned, it would be Ms. Schluto or staff members too. So if we have to swell our ranks a little bit, they'd be able to utilize Ms. Schluto's checklist to render aid for her in this, in meeting that timeline.
Past that, once we have closed the application period, which is two weeks, we would move into administrative review. That administrative review process would take place with the community development director, the city manager, the director of public safety. They'd be using the merit point system scoring that is not discussed tonight. That's at a future meeting for you all to cover.
Also not complete, as of yet.
Yes, it is still in draft phase, as well as going through some various department checks. So that might be, I know Councilmember Blanchard has brought up fire checks from our fire inspector, so going through all of the different things. The city treasurer would make sure that they are up to date on their taxes with us and are good stewards of the money there. So once it goes through this process, we go through, we go through that scoring matrix, they get their scores, and past that, we do our scoring notifications. So our top three are determined, and so if we have potential score ties, we've built in a tiebreaker, where if we have five applicants that get perfect scores, it moves into a lottery system. So we're still getting the best applicants, while also making sure that we're not moving into any subjective measures as to why would this one be better than this one if they have the exact same score. Past that, the top three would be notified of forward progress, and then all of the applicants and their scores would be released on our website, showing where everybody stands. From there, our top three applicants would move forward, being recommended for site plan approval from Planning Commission. We would go through this process with each candidate, which I'll cover what the different branches of approval look like from there. But just to note, before we move into that, their merit points are valid for 180 days from notification, with one 90-day extension possible with good faith or good cause. So 6A, as I call it. So site plans with approval, once the applicant receives site plan approval from the Planning Commission, they would be recommended to U. City Council to give final license approval. This final license approval kind of mirrors what liquor licenses do, where you ultimately are giving them the final go-ahead. If the site plan requires conditions, they must be met and approved by the Community Development Department. And then also, prior to the city council meeting where you would consider approval, that's where that public notice comes in, where property owners within 300 feet are being mailed. Public notices going up at City Hall, as well as in a regularly circulated newspaper. Site plan denial. So from this, if a site plan is denied, their license application is subsequently denied. While their merit points are good for 100 days, denied site plans by law. While their merit points are good for 100 days, denied site plans by law can't be reviewed for a year following their official denial by the Planning Commission, which ultimately means their application dies. And then from there, if anybody is denied, we would be replacing them within that 180-day period with the next highest point score. If that means we have a huge tiebreaker, we move back into that lottery process to draw the next one. And they would go back to the same process, starting over. Once they receive site plan approval, they get your approval. From there, they take your approval back to the state. LAR would then issue their final state approval and they would be able to begin operations. And then after that, for local, means they would have to come back to us a year after you give them the go-ahead. So say you give them a go-ahead at a September meeting, their license is issued that day, it would need to be renewed one year following that issuance. And that notification would come 30 days prior to that expiration. Non-renewed licenses would then be opened in an application period, and we would, of course, give out the number of licenses back up to our cap. So we've put together a tentative timeline. We have our application being publicized, so obviously, we have started it. We are not finalizing it until City Council gives the go-ahead. We didn't want to make a bunch of consistent changes over and over and over again. We want one fluid document that we can publicize a month out. Valentine's Day, as an "I love you" to everybody, we are hoping to open the application process, closing 14 days after on the 28th of February. From there, with our publication of points being due 90 days after the close of the process, we're looking at May 28th as the final deadline for administration to turn out those points. That is a minimum. That's not to say that they can't go through these applications quicker, assuming how well they're done. If the information is laid out nice and clean, it might be quicker review. From there as well, they're notified that May 28th, 180 days after that, November 24th, their merit points would expire. And if we weren't finalized in our licensing decision, we would need to do another process.
It seems like a very long time. So if publication of points is May 28th, then we have to go through site plan, and then ultimately to council. And then the state, once council says yes, the state. And assuming that there are changes to a building potentially and is part of the plan, theoretically, we could not see anything for like a year and a half, two years?
I mean, that's dependent on the developers.
Just seems like an awfully long time. I kind of thought we were always kind of chewed on first quarter, trying to have everything up and ready so that we could move.
Additionally, though, we did play with the idea of the merit points expiring sooner. But you also have to consider that these folks are going to have to schedule with Planning Commission and meet those deadlines for site plan approval. When we shorten the period for all of this action to take place, it locks them into needing site plan approval within one or two meetings. And if Planning Commission needed to put conditions on it, or they had to go back to the drawing board, which has happened in the past with businesses, then we didn't want to basically lock them out of the process and they'd have to start all over and pay their non-refundable fee again.
Okay. Seems like a lengthy process. Continue, sorry.
Oh, that was a...
Okay. Comments?
Yeah. I'm not in a rush. When you rush, mistakes get made. So I rather a slow and deliberate process than...
I wouldn't say I'm in any rush. There's nothing that impacts us, whether it's sooner or later. It just seems that there's a lot more movement in some other places. I'm just trying to figure out what changed in our initial projections to now. And it's not a, it doesn't impact me. It's not a yes or no change in my mind. I'm just curious as to, because if it's, if it's May, site plan, it could be a significant amount of time, which is okay, I guess. I just know that the longer things kind of go on, the more potential there is for changes throughout our process. And that's something I'm a little bit worried about. I want to make sure that what we have is safe, makes sense for the city, fits all of our guidelines, and fits our point system. If it's May, it's, it's May.
I was going to say merely that, Mr. Mayor, the, one of the areas that we could hopefully gain some time would be between the close of application dates and the administrative scoring of those items. Hopefully, we can get through those faster than three months. We did leave ourselves 90 full days in case we cannot, but that's an area where we try to be as efficient as possible and we can perhaps gain, potentially gain some time on this overall process.
And I do appreciate that. As ironic as it is that I asked Ms. Schluto if she needed more time, just a week to do that part, and now this, I'm like, wow, three months, that seems like a lot of time for that.
Thank you. I was actually going to try to draw out that same question. If, if we have some degree of confidence that between our director and then the supplemental staff to processes in a week, what are we going to be doing for all the other time leading up to the end of May? And so if I understand the intent of that milestone, whether that's the right date or not, is that when basically everybody would know who the top three were?
That's...
Okay. So that's like when the go button starts for them to begin the Planning Commission process and the site plan review, to your point about...
So that's a, that's a bare minimum deadline for us. And so we could turn around and release the point notifications the end of March, depending on how many applications. Like the bottom says, it depends on the volume. I think I've personally spoken to probably 50 different developers. And so if we're getting applications from 50 different developers, they're going to be a lot to pump out, but...
In a week.
But also to a fair point of three months as well. If the books are two inches thick, we want to give ourselves ample time to carefully look over these different documents.
Oh, sure. Yeah. And to the, to the point, I think we want to have a thorough review and a careful analysis and leading up to the points. So I'm not questioning the diligence that would go in there. I'm just trying to resonate, the, the two messages that we're hearing don't seem to click. Oh, we only need a week and oh, we need three months.
Well, the, the first check, that one week that we're talking about, is no in-depth look. It's going through and saying, they provided a business plan. They've provided this.
It's the initial sniff test with checklist. So that's not the thorough review.
That's a quick ensuring they've filled it out. The thorough review is the three-month part.
Okay. Well, that's helpful to have that additional clarity, to understand what, for ourselves and for folks that are considering joining this process, what would happen in that three-month window. So I think kind of, kind of clarifying that the one, the one week as mentioned earlier is the initial check to say, yep, is this, does this seem like at least it's a complete package? It doesn't say whether it's a good package.
Right. Absolutely.
All right.
It's not a qual, it's not a qualitative review. It's simply have they submitted a full application without any review of the merits of that application.
Right. Okay.
So that's a much quicker process than the qualitative review.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate that clarity. Because then again, the, the go button for them to get on the docket for the Planning Commission, for site plan, and all that kind of business would start there in June then, according to the schedule.
Assuming we take the full 90 days.
Assuming we take the full 90 days. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Cool. Thanks. Oh, did I have anything else? Oh, I guess one, maybe this is more for the city manager. A few months ago, we found it appropriate to put a temporary moratorium in place to protect the city and give us a chance to do exactly what we're doing now. And I may be mistaken in my notes, but I thought that that expired at the end of December of this year. And so I see dates here that, that take us well into January before, you know, any of these kinds of things happen and the ability to receive applications on Valentine's Day. So my procedural question is, do we need an additional buffer window to, for us, or the fact that the moratorium's going to end in, end of December, but they can't submit applications according to this schedule until middle of February? Does that, does that compute for us? Is that okay?
Yes, sir. There are, there are two protections in place in this process now. The, if council approves the second reading and adoption of this document, the city manager would be the one that's setting the application period. Therefore, we would not be able to accept applications until I've taken that action. The second part of it being the zoning district, being the licensing proceeding, the zoning, they're not actually permitted in any areas as of right now. And so we'd be able to control it through that regard as well. So we are protected there. We don't need to extend the moratorium. We continue to be on goal for meeting, you know, first part of 2020 to be able to accept those applications.
Thanks. I guess to, while I still have the mic for another second, if anything. One of the most contentious items in my mind has been removed from the process tonight, that being the actual points, merit points themselves. I noticed that the, you know, it's been tweaked on, you know, page 10 to say publication on the merit point scores and all this kind of fun stuff. So my process question is, when will we have that conversation? Because my support, I can support this process, but I want to understand what my options are in either supporting or not being in favor of the point system. Is that going to come before a formal vote at some time?
Yes, sir. That's adopted by resolution of the council. Yeah, we're going to bring those to you guys in January. As, as mentioned, after our previous meeting, our policy team met, went over some refinement of the language. We think we adequately incorporated the council conversation into an updated document, and we're going to have that out to you guys. We'll send it out individually. We'll share it so that you guys have the chance to make sure that we capture it appropriately. We'll want to bring it back before council, again, in the approval, the, the process of adopting it through resolution. So again, we're targeting January for that so that potential applicants have an opportunity to react to that document.
And so it being a resolution rather than an ordinance of sorts, so we just have a single opportunity to vote yes or no, what if we get a majority, it's not in favor of the point system?
This is why we want to get it out to you guys as soon as possible, so we can make sure that we capture the feedback from council members ahead of time so that we, we can adjust well ahead of that potentially happening. That's, that's, that's the intent.
At least you got a plan.
That's the intent right now, yeah. We, we don't want to be in that situation. We would have the ability to call a special meeting or potentially have a, adopt this at the February 3rd meeting. Again, we want to leave a little bit more time for the potential applicants, but we do have some other remedies if we run into that situation.
Thank you.
Questions? Councilor Hennan?
Yeah. Two points just on the length of time. While they're working on this, other city business doesn't stop. And for example, this is during our budget season, which is one of, if not the busiest time. So they'll have that. Going back to the, if a site plan review was denied, you don't need, you don't need to go back. But could an applicant be able to submit a, I know they can't submit the same, could they submit a different application without, you know, them automatically being thrown out of contention?
The application period would be closed by that point.
And that, and part of the application is the site plan? Understood? Got it.
And just for some background, if a, any other applicant wanted to submit a site plan and it was denied by the Planning Commission, if they wanted to come back, it would have to have substantial changes where they're incorporating an additional parcel or they're, they're making so substantive changes that one application does not reflect the other.
The reality is that very few site plans actually get denied. They may not be approved first time out, but through the process of going through the Planning Commission review and comment, and it goes back, then it comes back, they, sometimes it takes multiple meetings, sometimes just, just a couple. But eventually, the applicants generally would come up with an approvable site plan. Not, not very many times, they come to Planning Commission, they vote it down, we don't see them come back again for a year. That's the very rare case. The norm is that they eventually will have an approval, an approvable plan.
Erin?
Yes, that is, that is an excellent point. And I, I make a point in my reviews when I look at things, that if something is not ready to go before Planning Commission, if there's a chance of denial, I don't put it on the agenda. I advise the applicant what they need to fix, things that are deficient, that they run the risk of being denied, and then they have ample time to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on what Mr. Hill has presented to us this evening? Okay. Seem to be at least understanding of what that is. So thank you. Mr. Baumgarten, what's next?
I did want to call out some of the areas where we made some updates to it. I don't know if, John, if you want to kind of cover that territory for us? You'll see there are red lines through specific sections, so I don't know if you want to do a line-by-line analysis or if there are any specific questions of why things were changed. Almost every change does hearken back to previous conversations that councils had, type of licenses that have been removed, location time periods. We updated the timelines accordingly, duration of the license, those type items. Again, those are indicated in the, the redlined version that were included in your packet.
Most of the changes were, as the city manager just indicated, more cleanup things, being responsive to the council's comments last time. An ordinance, a draft ordinance of this length, that's one of those things, every, every time you go through it, you, you, you try to find and tweak something that maybe could read a little more clearly, less awkwardly than it first appears, or you realize that the, the intent that you're, you're trying to project maybe isn't as, as clear in writing as it might have been in, in the drafter's mind. But for the most part, the changes are, again, just cleanup items to address the, the number of matters that the council raised at the first reading. I don't think we made any substantive changes to the process or procedure since what you saw in the first reading.
So we see the, the changes here. Questions? Comments from council regarding the changes or even something that was not a change but something we would like to see changed? Councilmember Price?
Yes. After the first ordinance, I had a number of questions about some of the terms and why they were used. And I feel that they have been addressed by the city attorney because so much of this is mirroring the language of the state. And I think that that is a good way to do it, so that when lawsuits are brought against this, that we can punt it back to the state and make it clear that we are following in line with what they, their precedent is. I did have just one typo. I don't know if now is an appropriate time to point out a typo. Page four, it's item 26. Qualifying patient or registered qualifying patient. And it's right in the middle of that, has a valid registry identification card should be issued instead of issues.
It is a typo. You are correct.
So that would be the only minor change I would, I recommend at this time.
Additional questions on this? We talked about it, we made some changes. Now's the time, if there are comments on what we have here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the council. I'm Charles Murphy. I'm with the Clark Hill Law Firm and I live at 913 Bloomfield Nolan, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. I practice cannabis law and I've reviewed the draft ordinance with Barton Horace, who's here, and we're in agreement on this point. And we think there's an issue in the ordinance, and I've looked at a lot of them and I've drafted some, that we believe restricts the pool of qualified lawful compliant applicants. And I'm referring to 3903 sub 24, which requires proof of adult use prequalification by the Marijuana Regulatory Agency under the Adult Emergency Rules. And there's a reason for that. The way the industry developed in the state, as of last Wednesday when business closed, there were a total of six retail marijuana licenses issued in the whole state of Michigan. And a facilities license under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act is required prior to obtaining prequalification status for a recreational license. The licensing process under the medical marijuana statute has been very slow and the number of fully licensed businesses is small. The number of persons or businesses who are prequalified for rec is also very limited. Many of the early medical marijuana licensees were persons who had been operating unlawfully prior to the... prior to the enactment of the Medical Marijuana Statute. They were euphemistically known as temporary operators. In Detroit, they had about 300 of them. They were allowed to apply, but they had to apply by a certain deadline date under the medical marijuana rules, which was February 15, 2018. So the way the system was structured, a lot of the unlawful applicants were forced to file earlier than people who waited until the Medical Marijuana Statute was passed and applied when the window opened up with the state on December 15, 2017. There's also, I know you're not reviewing the scoring system tonight, but there's a bias in one of the categories in the scoring system that also goes to that point, and that's where you're awarded 12 points if you demonstrate experience operating a marijuana business for three years prior to the date of your application. Well, the first state operating facility license under the Medical Marijuana Act was not awarded until July 12, 2018. That was only 16 months ago. So again, that scoring system favors people that jumped in ahead of time, and it disfavors lawful compliant applicants who waited for the system to develop. So if the city of Berkeley, in our view, wants a pool of qualified applicants who are law-abiding and compliant, and waited for the system to develop legally, to choose from, we believe that that section should be amended. Our suggestion is that you allow a process where it's possible to get a city retail license, and then have a certain period of time to become prequalified under the recreational statute. And that could be a period of months or a year. That's fairly common in other cities that have required some type of prequalification under the Medical Marijuana Statute. So that's our suggestion for purposes of, we think, expanding the pool of potential applicants, so that you're getting people that have followed the system and have followed the law, as opposed to jumping into the business prior to the law going into effect. So that's our suggestion to the panel with respect to 30903 sub 24.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Dan Haberman, resident of Birmingham. If I could just follow up on that point a little bit more to help possibly clarify the point of previous operation of an illegal enterprise. In earlier drafts of the ordinance, there was a prohibition on those who had previously operated an illegal business of any kind. In the current draft, that was switched. The current language now requires a conviction for operating an illegal business of any kind. And so, you know, I'm not privy to why the change.
Well, hold on one second. Can we, do we know why? Why was that change made? And Dan, I'm not cutting you off, I just wanted to know.
I'm the one that made that change. Without a conviction, how do you determine that someone operated an illegal business?
Where was, was it initially from just a draft of a different?
Yeah, that was an early draft. I don't, I've lost count of how many drafts we're up to. We're well into the teens. But that was one of the clarifying language changes we made before, wasn't, the intention was not to, the intention was not to change the intent, but rather just to make the ordinance clearer, at least we felt, that, yeah, you still can't operate illegal business, but it isn't just going to be someone's subjective determination that you are operating illegally, but that we would look for an actual conviction, a determinate, court determination that that's what you were doing.
Well, I appreciate that, and I do understand the need for clarity. I think the concern here would be where you had a situation in a lot of municipalities around the state, where folks were specifically operating illegally, knowing that they were operating illegally, and the time, the time marks on that operation would certainly be clear enough to understand that if, if a business was operating before the passage of the MMFLA, there wasn't a legal way to do it. And one other, one other note that I saw change from previous drafts of the ordinance, and again, not even, not stepping toward the scoring system, understand that, to the most recent draft, is a complete removal of any reference to compatibility with design standards and master planning. Not, again, not sure why that would be. I, having attended a number of meetings and seen great concern from members of council and members of the community as to adherence with design standards for, you know, the best-looking facilities, I just, it was just curious to me that that would have been disappeared both from the ordinance and the scoring system.
There's, I think there's a fairly simple, straightforward answer to that, and that recommendation came primarily from the planning commission, when they were asked for their review of their ordinance, and there was concern on the planning commission's part that that already is part of their site plan review function. And was that function being taken away from them by the city council through this licensing ordinance and the licensing process? And clearly, that was not what we intended to do, so that's why that language was removed. There still is going to be that, that review for compliance, but it will be done at the planning commission level as part of their normal site plan review criteria and standards.
Mr. Mayor, additionally, the merit system referenced the design guidelines specifically. The design guidelines were, have not been adopted by council, and the design guidelines apply specifically to the DD8 district. And so it was not applicable document to our conversation here, which is why it was ultimately removed.
Thank you.
Thank you. To the previous comment regarding, you know, the establishment of business, prior to that 2018 versus what we have, what is our, our background on that? And you know, before you do that, I apologize. Councilmember Price has made a motion to suspend the rules. Supported by Councilmember Gavin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried, the rules are suspended. Okay, we can continue.
The, my, which, which issue or question?
With regards to not having three years lawfully to be able to operate under the current state statute versus where we have three years as our requirement, or prequalification, I guess.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I can address that. That was one of the items we were asked to look at, following the merit, merit system discussion last time. That'll be addressed in a subsequent draft, where the, the amount of time isn't so stringent as it was in the previous draft.
Okay, so we will be able to do that in a second reading, not changing if this, what if this, if this were to move forward tonight?
That appeared in the merit system criteria, so that can be adopted by resolution.
Right, that, okay. I thought you were talking about, okay. All right, yes, we're good with that. No worries, worried about that. Other questions? Before I give it back to council?
How's it going at Kirkville, Berkeley? You know, I heard you're not covering the merit, so I just want to make sure, is there going to be a point in time when you guys have a discussion about the merit point system? Because I, I do have some concerns about, I just, they're not a big deal, but I didn't want to.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry.
Kurt? Matt, I need to talk to you for one quick second.
Sure.
Just got, from the chief.
Okay.
Just a very quick, pardon?
Kurt, if I may, as we, as we take a brief interruption here, your line of questioning is similar to something that I asked just a moment ago, maybe you were out of the room or something, I know you had to step out. I had asked that very same question, to say, if not now, when will we have the discussion about the merit system? And I'm satisfied with the response, is that the drafts will continue to be revised and updated, work through council, and come to a public session, a public meeting in January.
Right, I just want to share, the only concern is that I've been, that myself, Sharon, other people has talked about, is that there's two ones, two points that are worth, they're so heavily favored that if, I mean, if you pick a spot on 11 mile, you're autumn, I mean, you're going to be guaranteed that nobody else can compete on the point scale. And, and so it's, it's almost like, two of them are almost the same thing, you know? You pick a vacant building, or you pick a building 11 mile, you're getting 20 points and 18 points, so that's what I can say.
Understood, yep, and there, many of us have similar questions about either that item or others on the system, and so that's what January is for. Thank you.
I do apologize for that, there was a message from the chief, the public safety chief, that we had to take care of. Additional questions? Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, I don't think we've fully addressed Mr. Murphy's concerns with the sub item number 24, the prequalification status, you know, and if anybody would be eligible for that, you know, if, and I don't know the answer.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment on that, and perhaps Mr. Murphy can help us further with that, too. That was put, put in, it was, was my understanding that having that prequalification requirement in the application actually was going to be more the norm than the exception in local ordinances, perhaps you've, you've seen it differently, but it's also partly to reflect that under, under the, the new marijuana law, the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, which the voters approved, it expressly provides in that, that for the first two years after the state starts accepting applications, and I think we're only one month into that, now I think the state just started accepting applications last month, for those first two years, the only folks, the only applicants who are going to be eligible to get recreational, in our case, retail licenses, are going to be those who already have a state operating license under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Act. So this kind of goes to what, what we were talking about before, and you in particular, Mayor, when you were concerned about the timeline, our concern here was not to have, to process applications for review of licenses, that they may not even be able to get their state license for another two years. The idea was to, I guess, to have ready, ready-to-go license candidates that the council could, you know, could consider, at least at this, this first cycle. I mean, we, we are capping it initially under this ordinance, but that doesn't mean that the council won't reopen it, depending how, depending what our experiences are with this. But that was really the concern, is if we take away that prequalification requirement, we might be getting a whole slew of applicants that is a practical matter, they're not going to be able to open for business for two more years. So the thought is that, you know, that's why we have the prequalification requirement in there right now. Now, if we're misunderstanding something, or misstating something, I would appreciate the clarification from you.
No, I think the, I've met with Director Brisbo two weeks ago, and we talked about the application process, and the Marijuana Regulatory Agency is going to process recreational applications within a very short timeframe. It's either 60 or 90 days. So if you get your facilities license under the Medical Marijuana Act, and apply for recreational with the state, it's a quick process at this point in time. If they send you a question and you don't respond within five days, they dismiss your application. So it's a very, it's a much more streamlined process, now that they have a full staff, very well trained, to process recreational. When they first started on medical, there was a huge backlog, they, they had a staff that wasn't trained, and it was very slow and cumbersome. And the new system, I think, would accommodate the idea that a person could apply to Berkeley, be approved for a medical marijuana facilities license, and then very quickly get the recreational license from the state because of the timeframe. The timeframe is right in the rules and the statute, in terms of how quickly the agency has to process your application. But I think because of the confluence of when the recreational statute went into effect, and they started taking applications, and when Berkeley is opting in for it, it creates kind of a system where you're going to really restrict the pool of applicants, like I said earlier. And it's going to favor people that were what we call temporarily operating before the state law actually went into effect.
Does that clarify? Yeah.
Part of the reason why they're able to move so quickly on the recreational licensing, though, is that because having only awarded it to those that have been through the higher scrutiny of the medical side, they don't want to duplicate that process. So we are, and our process that we're proposing to council today does rely heavily on the scrutiny that the state puts forth for their applicants before they even move to the process of getting here. To Mr. Sterren's point, we could end up losing applicants after a lengthy process locally to the state's process, and then we're in a perpetual, go the next, go the next person on the list, next person on the list, next person on the list type cycle. That's, that's why it's built the way it is before you this evening.
Is there any flexibility there? Or do you think this warrants any flexibility?
I think there can be flexibility added.
Is it necessary, I guess, in your, in your estimation?
I'm not going to say it's necessary, but I, you know, I am concerned of what, the outcome of, that the city manager just outlined, that the staff will spend a lot of time bringing these to council. You'll have these, and instead of ready-to-go operations, we could, we could end up having significant delay, and possibly have applicants that have passed through our process, but who won't ultimately make it through the state process. Our intention was to flip that around and find out that we were getting, that we were getting good, solid candidates, and what's more, we didn't want to necessarily duplicate the state's work of vetting applicants to see if they're qualified, rather, we wanted to let the state do that heavy lifting, if you will, so that when they come to us, we know they're already prequalified with the state.
Mr. Haberman?
If I could, I might be able to help clarify a little bit. When I first read that, I kind of skipped over the, the adult use portion of it, and I thought it was a reference to prequalification for medical, which is that first big heavy lift that the state does. And if the city required prequalification for medical, that prevents a flood of applicants who haven't even begun the state process and don't hold that prequalification, which would create that problem of, oh no, now we've got somebody who's not going to get any qualification from the state. So if that were revised, and you might be able to confirm, or tell me that I'm wrong, but if it were a prequalification for medical, as opposed to a prequalification for recreational, that, that might accomplish the dual goals.
My name is Barton Morris, I'm the principal attorney at the Cannabis Legal Group, and I have performed a good number of applications to the state of Michigan, and I would agree that the one reason why the department or the Marijuana Regulatory Agency is able to quickly get through a recreational application is because all of those applicants have been prequalified through the medical program. And so this council could amend its ordinance to require prequalification under the medical program, and then that would satisfy both of these concerns. One, all of those individuals then would be, all those companies would then be easily, or more easily licensed through the recreational program, and you wouldn't have the concern of potentially granting a license to somebody that have to go through a lengthy process in addition to providing a full opportunity for the council and the city to be able to evaluate all qualified applicants.
What is council thinking, that at some point, we're going to have to make a decision here and move on to the next item? Thoughts on what we've heard presented, especially as it relates to that last item? Councilmember Henin?
I'll throw this out. Requirement of medical prequalification, and then a recreational prequalification can be, can arrive after the applications close, but have, like, within 30 days or something, but still have to be there, and is a requirement, you know, a hard requirement for being a finalist. So that could possibly even be a pass/fail part of the evaluation metrics.
So, if I'm understanding, hearing you correctly, prequalification, the medical side, having that. side, having that not as a condition of application, but as a prequalification, you can apply and within 30 days get the prequalification for recreational within 30 days, is that?
Something along those lines are what I'm, is what I'm brainstorming, yes.
Other thoughts, councilmembers on that? There, well, first, Mr. Attorney, does that make sense? Is that legal?
I mean, I, I
Is there an issue?
Have to play with the language, but I think that's doable.
Okay. Council, thoughts on this?
Just a, a small point, as you, Mr. Attorney, helped elaborate a little bit more of the background and context around this one, you referred back to the, the state law that was passed by the voters. Is this conversation now still remain in alignment with your earlier comments about requirements from the state law, or would we kind of be moving in a different direction if we were to shift this?
No, I don't think we're moving in a different direction. We certainly can't do anything that would, would, nor are we attempting to do anything that would alter the, the state law. So, no, I think what we're, we're trying to, assuming trying, trying to do, just struggling a little bit how to get there, is to get, I guess, the best, I use the word qualified, best qualified group of potential candidates, applicants, for the city to scrutinize and present those candidates to council to make licensing decisions without, hopefully with, with the ability to filter out those candidates who are not viable from the get-go.
Right, excellent. So if I could, I think if I could rephrase what I think I heard, I liked the gist of it. To get entry to the system, you need the, the medical prequalification, and then some time period, 30 days, 60 days, whatever is appropriate, they need to get to state, and that would be a, a hard gate before they could actually move forward with any project. Is that kind of the gist of what we're?
Yes.
Did I get that right? Cool.
So my question is, we, we have a, a second reading of this ordinance here in front of us, and we don't want to not know what we are going to pass on the second reading. It's not like we were, unless we decide to bring this back for a separate second reading. Aside from that item, 24, or subset 24, other questions on this ordinance as we move forward? No? I'm seeing no's. Okay. That being said, Mr. Sterren, can we come up, can we, can you craft something that fits the general theory of what was mentioned?
Yes. Do you mean, like, right this second?
Well, that's the thing, is do we need, do we need to do that immediately to make this, to be able to pass this? Can we pass a contingent on that wording? I mean, what, what is the way to proceed? Because I don't want to belabor this point, and if it's not ready, then it's not ready. We have lots of other things we need to get through.
Right, well, there's a couple ways we can go. I mean, typically, council likes to see the final version of the language before you adopt it. You do have another meeting in two weeks.
We kind of do, we kind of don't, let's put it that way.
Kind of do, kind of don't, but where, where this could be passed and still stay within the, the timeline, the timeframe you were talking about before. We don't have a lot of wiggle room, but we have at least a meeting's worth of wiggle room. But typically, an ordinance, especially one as important as this, I would think you would want to see the final language written and have it available, have it available to the public in advance of your final adoption of it.
So we have a motion on the table by Mayor Protem Dean, supported by Councilmember Baker Blanchard? Apparently the one with a B that time. Make that clear. Councilmember Blanchard. That being the case, which I think does make sense, meaning we're not going to move on this today, not because substantive issue, but we want to make sure that the wording on this is appropriate before we move forward. Have another meeting in December, we'll be, it will be fine, we have the time to, to do that. Is that what I'm hearing? I mean, is that the general?
Yep.
Is that fine, that we want? Well, let's do it right. And that being the case, in order to postpone the second reading, can we postpone a second reading? I mean, wouldn't have any issue with this.
No, you can, the only requirement in the charter is that you have at least two readings, but you can have as many as you want, as long as it's at least two.
Okay. All right. So do we need to, do we vote to postpone as opposed to voting this down, then?
It would be, it would be a
Amendment to the motion?
Motion to postpone any further discussion on, on the matter.
Mayor Protem, do you, would you make that motion?
Yes, I would amend the motion to.
We're not amending, we're going to, we're going to make the motion to postpone.
Make a motion to postpone.
Yes, motion to postpone.
Make a motion to postpone.
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Blanchard. Any discussion on the motion?
Again, what's coming back, sir, if I may, is, is the same thing with the typo corrected and the revised item for this subsection 24, which we appreciate being brought to our attention because it does seem like a good item to clarify.
That's fine, unless there are additional items. I haven't heard any.
We do have additional time now, if anything else came up.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on the motion to postpone?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for participating in that conversation, making sure that we are moving in the right direction for the city. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the next item on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-1419, matter of considering the first reading of a zoning ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Sections 138-363, 138-387, 138-417, 138-427, 138-442, 138-457, 138-472, 138-487, and add new section 138-528 to Chapter 138 zoning to establish zoning requirements for marijuana businesses.
Is there a motion to approve O-1419? So moved. Motion approved by Councilmember Gavin.
Second.
Support from Councilmember Price. We are talking about the zoning ordinance, and before we do go any further, Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, I just wanted to disclose that I live about 50 feet from the border of the Coolidge District, but I do believe I can consider this issue in a fair and impartial manner, but just wanted to make that clear.
I appreciate that. I see no conflict of interest. Do my fellow colleagues see any conflict there? It's just a matter of where he lives, happened to be within that. Appreciate you disclosing it. I think we'll allow you to stay in. Not getting out that easily. Mr. Baumgartner?
Mr. Mayor, this is the zoning side of the marijuana conversation. The, this ordinance comes before you, has been recommended to you by the Planning Commission after holding their normal due diligence on the matter. They've held a public hearing, considered this item closely, and ultimately decided to pass it along with a, with an affirmative recommendation. Ms. Schluto was, was there to guide this process through its normal course, and she can fill in any information, any questions you may have.
Anything you'd like to add?
The only thing that we've really changed in, in this prior to the, the last time that it was before you, obviously, we have reduced the number of permitted uses to the medical marijuana provisioning centers and the adult use recreation, which we discussed, excuse me, discussed at length. And then we've also included in Section 138-528, subsection E, the notice for the public hearing requirements and site plan approval by the Planning Commission. We did hold the public hearing at the November 26, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. There was some comments from the public, which were heard by the Planning Commission members, and they, as Mr. Baumgartner said, they unanimously approved the recommendation to City Council.
Okay, thank you. Comments from councilmembers on the ordinance in front of us? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you again, Your Honor, and thank you for stewarding that process through the meeting. It seemed to be very well-informed and focused dialogue. I appreciate you and the Planning Commission and our residents and all involved in that. I don't have any problems with this, I'm just wondering, given that we, oh, this is just the first reading, so I think I answered my own question, that we have postponed the, the other ordinance to a later date, would we be in any sticky situation by moving forward with this one? But since it's just the first
It will actually dovetail quite nicely with this one.
It's scheduled to be on the 16th already.
They would both come back to you potentially at the same meeting for final adoption.
That light bulb went on halfway through my sentence. So it seems like we'll be all right, assuming, so this will be second reading for next time, and it'll be the second, second reading for the other one, so, thank you.
Additional questions, comments on zoning? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you. Just a comment, I think this does capture all the stuff that we discussed in the last meeting, the districts and the review and notification of residence, so I'm, I'm happy with it the way it reads now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments on this? Again, this is a little shorter than the last one, a little more kind of to the point. Here's where it's allowed. Questions, comments from anybody that's here that would like to comment on the zoning aspect of it, which is relatively open? I'm not going to ask again.
Sorry, Kurt, hi, Berkeley. You know, I forgot to mention earlier, so it's kind of combined the two. I was confused, there was a, there was a mention of something required, where business that wanted to do marijuana could also do another business in Berkeley. Did you guys figure that out as far as would it be another business and would have to stay in business while the marijuana facility is running, or if they, like, opened up for three months and shut down, would that, would they still be able to operate or something like that, or?
Not entirely sure.
There's a, when your point, you say if you open up two businesses in Berkeley, that you get point, rewarded points.
Yes, yes. If, if a development includes space for a non-cannabis business in addition to the cannabis business, we'll award points on the merit system for the, for that application. So that would be a separate conversation than what we're doing here.
But would they have to stay open as well?
On the metrics, yes.
I guess I would just want to find out if they have to stay open, okay.
Thank you.
And, but no, I, I wanted to say, I really appreciate all the work that's been done on all this, the presentation looks nice, and, and I appreciate everybody's, you know, willingness to keep moving it forward because, you know, it shows that you guys have done a lot of work on it, and thank you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Kurt. Additional comments?
Hi, Dana Mori from 3249 Wakefield, and I just had a question on the zoning regarding the second business that you get points for. There are zones opted in, and then industrial zone, which, there's only a few limited businesses that you can open up there, like manufacturing and industrial businesses. So I just wanted a little more clarity on the process if a company wanted to bring an additional business to Berkeley but not have it be an industrial business in that zone, how they would include that on their application, would, would it be a variance? Would it be before they actually applied or during the application process?
Mr. Baumgartner?
Sure. I would actually, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, ask Aaron Schluto to discuss this. We've been talking about it internally, unique to our conversations with this applicant. They're in the industrial section, as he said, there's a, they have a vision for their non-cannabis business that does necessarily apply.
To the current zone.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Well, they would typically have, if a business wanted to go into a district where they're not technically permitted, they would have two options. They could apply for a use variance through the ZBA or apply for a text amendment that would go through Planning Commission and then City Council approval. In this instance, we would suggest going the route of the ordinance amendment because that would pertain to any and all properties in that district, and it would be looked upon as, for the betterment of the entire community rather than just one parcel.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer a question? Clear? Some clarity?
A little bit, but on the timing, like, if you're going to apply for, you know, for this on January 4, or February 14th, would you have to get that approved prior to that, that date to apply with that second business?
Well, at that point, it's simple site plan at that point, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hill. And for the, when the application's open, they start submitting, they're not submitting full detailed architectural plans, they're
That's basic site plan.
Right, basic site plan. Are you saying that the building that is connected to what would be a potential marijuana or cannabis building, but you want to have a use that is not currently allowed in the industrial zone?
Correct.
That, and Aaron, is that the same, everything, what you just mentioned applies? Okay. I would suggest getting with her offline to make sure that you can answer, get that question answered. Thank you. Additional questions on zoning? Comments from anybody? All right, seeing none. Again, thank you for participating, those of you that chose to participate in this conversation, asking questions. They were all great questions, very germane to what we were talking about, so I certainly appreciate that. But seeing no additional questions on the zoning aspect, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O-1419?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number nine on our agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on item number nine?
Resolution number R-4119, matter of authorizing the amendment of the fiscal year 2019, 2020 operating budget as presented.
Is there a motion to approve R-4119?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Dean. I'll throw a race to Mr. Pollak, or would you like to?
No, in the interest of time, Mr. Pollak is available to answer any questions.
I'm not offended that everyone's leaving either. I just, I don't have a whole lot to say, other than we did have a couple carryover items after talking with Derek in major, yeah, major and local streets. Had to put the fire truck back in since it was a prepaid item on last fiscal year, so one thing I'm going to add, which I think helps, should help council, is the fund balance projections on the spreadsheets, which will show you estimated fund balance after the amendments are made. I think it's important to kind of see where we're going to be. You can see, there's still going to be a surplus in the major street fund, and it increases the deficit in the local street fund, but we're still looking at pretty good-sized fund balances in each. And then, I know we mentioned the rainy day fund earlier and the general fund, we're looking at about $2.4 million deficit this year, which would take our fund balance down to just under $4.3 million, but that still puts us in, you know, 40% or better reserve, which is still pretty good.
Thank you. Questions for our finance director as we look at these budget amendments today? Do not see any, I don't see anybody jumping up to ask questions either. Thank you, Mr. Pollak. I, as you said, goes with our conversation today and with some other changes that we made, and it does make sense, so I will ask Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-4119?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Before we move to our next item, which is communications, I will remind everybody that we have a closed session that we'll be going to after this, and there will not be any action taken after that closed session. We will simply come back and adjourn the meeting. So after communications, we'll ask for motion to go into recess into closed session, we'll do that, we'll come back, we'll adjourn the meeting, but there will be no additional business, I want to make that clear. I know a lot of you probably want to wait till we get back out at like 11:45, 11:30, but I'm going to save you some time and allow you to leave early, I promise nothing will happen. All right, with that, communications, who's up?
Councilmember Gavin.
All right, thank you very much. Environmental Advisory Committee doesn't have a meeting this month. Coolidge Task Force does have a meeting on December 5th, Public Safety Conference Room. And then Planning Commission, we already heard a little bit about what was talked about at that meeting. Also, met and recommended approval of site plan for La Sallete and discussed priorities for future ordinance amendments, including parking and signage, but not certainly limited to those. So, next meeting is going to be December 17th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Henon?
All right, the Tree Board nor the ZBA met since our last meeting, but, and the Tree Board doesn't meet in December, but I did see the city's tree contractor driving by my home today, so, with a truck full of trees, so they have started planting them. Then the ZBA will hear two cases on Monday, December 9th, here at 7:00 PM at council chambers. One is for a home addition that would encroach too far into the side yard, and one is for a trailer, we heard a little bit about this in public comment, a trailer-mounted MRI for a new medical office proposed at the Family Video location. for a new medical office proposed at the Family Video location. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
I have two things, thank you. Parks and Recreation, the Candy Cane Lane Craft Show sponsored by the Berkeley Junior Women's Club is Saturday, December 14th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Community Center. And Parks and Rec will be running vacation camps in December, so if you want to take advantage of those, either call the Rec Center or you may register online at Berkeley dot MaxGalaxy dot net. Thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Awesome, thank you, sir. Technology Advisory Committee meets in two weeks. At the last meeting, they talked about an extensive backlog of potential items to help support the Historical Committee, so I was really pleased to see those two groups working together to help advance the technical state of the museum, and they'll be continuing to reach out to other committees along the way here. The Downtown Development Authority DDA Board meets next week, Wednesday, the 11th. They're in the process of reposting the opening for the Executive Director to oversee day-to-day operations within the DDA. And the Merry Month continues. There's joyful music for the holidays coming up this Saturday, December 7th, from 3:00 to 4:00 at Berkeley First Methodist. The Holiday Lights Parade is, is the Saturday also, December 7th, at 5:30. And then before we meet again, there's two other events just to quickly highlight. The Merry and Bright Shopping Night will be next week's Friday, December 13th, from 5:00 to 9:00, and there'll be gifts and drawings and raffles and fun stuff like that to help encourage you to come and support local businesses and get some really unique gifts for you and yours. And finally, from the DDA lens here, the Merry Mix and Mingle Ugly Sweater Contest, the shindig, ugly sweater shindig this year, is on Saturday, December 14th, next week's Saturday, from 7:00 until 10:00 at the Berkeley VFW on Coolidge. There's a $3 entry fee to help support the event, or you can bring in a new pair of mittens, gloves, that'll be donated to the mitten organization that brings all that stuff together. And for more information on upcoming events, visit downtownberkeley dot com. On the Historical Committee front, the museum will be open before, during, and after the Holiday Lights Parade, and they encourage you to come on in and warm up and enjoy some cookies and snacks and learn a little bit more about this fantastic city that we live in. And finally, I'll just close with a quote from Terry Marshall, who said, "The holiday season is a perfect time to reflect on our blessings and to seek out ways to make life better for those around us." So as you think about all the great things that are going on in your life, think about the, the needs and great things that others could enjoy as well, and let's live up to our weak here. I think we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you. So since the previous meeting, I attended the Michigan Municipal League's Training for Newly Elected Officials, where I got to learn more about my role and responsibilities, the Freedom of Information Act, the Open Meetings Act, and municipal finance. I'm very grateful to the MML for this resource and ongoing education. I also attended the Library Board meeting as the liaison. That meeting included reports on many highly attended and successful programs, as well as a report of steady increases in circulation compared to the previous three years. So yay, using the library benefits all. In terms of continuing and upcoming programs at the library, I just want to highlight the newly for, relatively newly formed Berkeley Chess Club. It meets on Mondays from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. All ages and abilities are welcome. And this Saturday, sounds like it's a busy one, all are invited to visit the library between 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM to write letters to Santa. Light refreshments will be provided. I also get to learn about some of the ways in which our library supports other departments and our schools, Battle of the Books and the schools going on right now, and our library, in addition to getting materials to support that program, sends staff members into the schools to help facilitate that activity. And I just, I love highlighting moments of cooperation like that. Also, our library will be closed on Friday, December 20th, for an Alice training with the Department of Public Safety. So again, departments collaborating. And then finally, I wanted to let everybody know that today kicked off the diaper drive for the Moms Club of Berkeley, and the Moms Club is very grateful that all of our community departments, Public Safety, the Public Library, City Hall, Public Works, Community Center, are acting as donation drop-off locations. We also, the Moms Club will also be having drop-off locations at Berkeley First Church, Keanu Lutheran Church, and the Berkeley Chop Shop is new this year. This drive benefits all programs under the Child and Family Services Program at Judson Center, which helps many vulnerable members of our community. So while you're out shopping, pick up an extra pack of diapers or pull-ups and drop them off anytime between now and December 20th, and they'll get to families in need. Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. A little bit more on Saturday, the 7th, the Holiday Lights Parade is not just a parade. We've got a petting zoo going on from 1:00 to 4:00 at 12 Mile and Tyler, and new this year is a smores station from 1:00 to 5:00 at Griffiths and 12 Mile, and then the carriage rides in the evening down Rosemont are going on. The parade starts at 5:30 and ends at the gazebo next to the museum, and of course, Santa will be there, he's the big hit of the thing. Come and see the parade, say hi to Santa, and then drop into the museum. Be a great time to pick up Berkeley Santa mugs and tree ornaments, see, you stole and borrowed my stuff already, but that's okay. And when you watch the parade, remember to wave to Jeff Tong, because Jeff's one of our honorary grand marshals, and he's been practicing getting ready for the parade, so, thank you.
Mr. Baumgartner?
I have no real items except to say happy birthday to the Mayor Pro Tem. I know there was probably a time you used to celebrate your birthday at 11:30 at night, some are, some are a lot different than this, but I appreciate, and happy birthday.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Nothing this evening.
As my colleagues have mentioned, December 7th is a very big day in the community, capped off with, of course, the Holiday Lights and the visit from, from Santa. I do have in my possession the key to the City of Berkeley that I will be happily handing over to Santa on the 7th, and I certainly hope that everybody can make it out there and has a great time. It's a tremendous event, it's a tremendous day, and it only gets better every single year, and I do want to give a shout-out to everyone that helps put this on, Sindha Kuhn, the entire team, all of the volunteers, DPW, everybody that works on the floats, everyone that works to make that happen, Public Safety, that night blocking off the, you know, making sure the roads and everybody's safe. An event doesn't happen if we don't have employees in the city who volunteer time because they care, and it's an incredible event, and we shall be thankful for, for the work that they do. Now, with that, Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 10 on our agenda?
Closed session, matter of considering whether to convene into closed session.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
So moved. By Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Discussion?
Let's go.
Would you please call the roll?
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
I will give you each two and a half minutes. Are we staying here, whatever's going to be more efficient for our time today? It's 10:37.
Stay here.
Stay here.
It's colder.
Stay here.
All right, then. The heat went up some.